Commissioner, you ready?
Yep.
Ready, go. Hi, good evening. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, November 7, 2024, 5:30, Ernie Lee McGahay Government Building. Please turn your cellphone to the vibrate, silence, or off setting. Board of County Commissioners allows any person to speak regarding an item on the agenda. The speaker will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise determined by the chairperson to allow sufficient time for all speakers. Speakers, please refrain from abusive or profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, protest, or any other conduct which interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Upon completion of the public comment period, discussion will be limited to board members and questions raised by the board. Is Pastor James Carter from Milestone Baptist here? Yes, sir. Thank you. I apologize if we're behind Mr. Carter there and I didn't see you in the room. If everyone would please rise, you have the floor. Mr. Carter?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, tonight we just come. We say thank you for the men and women who have come and have dedicated their lives to serve. This evening, as they prepare to do their duty, we come to lift them up before you. In your word, you said that if anyone lacks wisdom, that we can come and we can ask you, and you would give it. Tonight, we're asking for your wisdom. We recognize our need for your guidance in all that we do. As we come tonight, we're asking for three specific things. First, we ask that you give these men and women eyes that see clearly the issues that need to be addressed. Second, we ask that you give them wisdom to know the next steps that they need to move. Third, we ask that you give them the courage to stand and do what is right in the face of doubt and opposition. Lord, we ask these things. We know these men and women have unique experiences, different perspectives, and, Lord, we ask that you use these differences that they have as a tool that will strengthen and build our community. Lord, give them the insight that they need to serve us well. We ask that you bless these men and women and their families. We ask that you bless our community. Our trust and hope remains in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hofberger, leave us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. As you walk out, I want to thank you for the use of the facility over the years for many public meetings at Milestone Baptist. Thank you very much. Madam Counsel, anything to be added to the agenda?
No, sir.
Commissioner May?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think we have a few discretionary items that have been added, but I've been advised that have three that have not been added that'll be passed out.
Okay. Super.
And so if we can do those, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Kohler? Commissioner Hofberger?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have none. Mr. Administrator, none? All right. Entertained a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Please vote. Thank you. Agenda passes five to zero. Commissioners forum, Commissioner May?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly want to congratulate you, Chairman Berry, for the successful race, and Commissioner Hofberger, Ashley, congratulations, and Commissioner Strohberger, I think that he's here, I want to congratulate each of you for those of us that put ourselves out to be scrutinized, oftentimes undeserving, to serve. It's something that calls for your character to be able to do that. So congratulations to each of you. Certainly want to send my condolences and prayers to Ms. Vanita Owens, who worked for Escambia County for more than 30 years. Her daughter Tracy Hayes lost her life this past weekend, this past week, and so our prayers are off to them. And to two inmates in Escambia County Jail, Kevin and Kenny, who are both friends of mine, who were inmates at Escambia County Jail, to their families, I want their families to know that we are concerned. We do recognize the importance of being sympathetic and sending our condolences to families who have lost their loved ones, whether they're incarcerated or whether they're not incarcerated. They have mothers and fathers, they have sisters and brothers, they have aunts and uncles, and so our prayers are going to continually go out to them. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Wes Marino. Wes, throughout this week, we've had some challenges on housing issues and those issues, and I appreciate your leadership in navigating through that to get to what is true and what is right. So thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Commissioner Magosh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, to every citizen in Escambia County, I want to say thank you for really the honor and privilege of my life. This will be my last meeting on this board, and at the end of the 18th of this month, this will be the end of my service. But prior to that, for the 18 years prior to that, I just feel like one of the luckiest guys in the world. I got to be a school board member, serving my district, and I got to be a county commissioner, serving my community, and very few people get the opportunity to do either. And so I just can't thank the citizens enough. It's the greatest privilege of my life, being able to serve. And as I drive around the district, as I drive around the county, and I see some of the marks of what the school board did during my time, and I see some things that we've done here on this board, it's a sense of pride. And, you know, just basically, just kind of going through the chronology of it, when I was first elected in November of 2006, the very first meeting after the organizational meeting, and I backed into politics, I was asked to run, had really no interest in local politics at that time, owned a small business, but the very first vote that we had to make on the school board, December 21, 2006, never forget it, was to close Woodham High School. Can you imagine what kind of meeting that was?
I was there.
You probably were there. It was unbelievable. Hundreds of people, and I thought to myself at that time, what have I gotten myself into? And I've been to a few of those meetings down the line, 2009, actually, seven through eight, the Great Recession, the big budget cuts we had to take, and then 2009, we closed Carver Century. 2010 through 14, we had a lot of good things happen, built some schools, we lost some population, and then 2014, another really great honor in my life, I was elected unopposed. And then 2016 was a very tough race, but I was able to win my first term on the Board of County Commissioners. And we've done a lot. We've been through a lot, but we've done a lot. And so, you know, it hasn't always been a smooth road, but these local elected offices, they're not for the faint of heart, as you all know. And I want to congratulate everyone who ran for office. I want to congratulate the winners. And I will tell you, to the folks who've lost, I've had my name on the ballot seven times. I won six of them, couldn't get the last one, but I know the feeling on both sides, and I think it's something that everyone should experience. Everyone should be able to have the opportunity that I've had to serve, and serve something that's greater than yourself. So there's a lot of tough challenges that this board will be facing in the next few years. I don't envy you. You'll have to make some tough decisions, but I just want to, from my perspective, I want everyone to know, I leave this board very optimistic. I am very bullish on the future. The election went the right way at the national level, and I think there's a lot of great opportunity ahead. So thank you to every citizen. I want to thank my family, my wife, she couldn't be here, she's at a conference in Orlando. I think my kids, you know, as you all know who have run for office, it's hard enough on a candidate, but it's incredibly difficult on the family. So always think, I would just encourage you, think about that, you know, when you criticize people online, when you say things about people online, most of us up here have thick skin, but it's the families. It's the families. And to the staff, Wes, you've got an amazing team. I've really enjoyed my time working with this staff. Everything I've ever needed, every constituent issue, they've been handled. I'm going to miss the staff. You guys were great. I've enjoyed working here. Again, one of the honors and privileges of my life. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave the remarks right there, but I just want people to know one word about this: gratitude. I have gratitude. I'm very grateful for the citizens that have put me in office, and I wish everyone the best of luck going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. We should have let Jeff speak last.
Yeah, exactly.
That's fantastic, yes.
And Jeff, I did not mention you, but since you were elected, we sit next to each other. And we disagree. I mean, quite frankly, you just disagree that we made the right choice on a national level. I don't agree. But, yeah, I mean, I know, I saw your MAGA hat, too. But Jeff, we've been able to agree to disagree civilly, and I appreciate your leadership. And, you know, I see Commissioner Wilson Robertson out there, that we probably had different political ideologies, and so often within politics, just because we don't align ourselves with political parties, we have to be adversaries, and we have to do hateful things to each other. And so, you know what? Maybe we disagree politically, but fundamentally, we agree that we want to do what's best for the citizens, and you've always done that. It's been an honor to serve with you. We had some competitive times, who has the best jacket and who had the best tie?
I think I've won.
I think I've won most times. But Jeff, it's been an honor to serve with you, and we wish you well, and if you ever need a liberal on a conservative radio show, I mean, call me early enough.
I might take you up on that.
I may wake up and do it. But again, Jeff, it's been an honor to serve with you.
I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lumen.
Absolutely. Commissioner Kohler?
Yeah. Jeff, I guess I'll start with you first, because we've had our ups and downs. It's no, but I will say one thing, Jeff did fight for District One. I saw him, to the point, sometimes I wanted to reach over and give him a punch in the arm, honestly. But people know your legacy. They know what you've done, and I wish you the best. I guess you're trying to take on Rush Limbaugh or something now, but good luck with that. And no hard feelings for me, I mean that. Mr. Chairman, I've got a few things I want to talk about. So Dorothy, will you please stand up for just a second? Dorothy Berry will be working in my office, I know, for the staff. I just want you to know who she is. Retired Navy chief, she has also worked out at the base at NETSI, and she's going to be on board as aide and working with Cheryl, which y'all know Cheryl. She's keeping the staff busy, I know that. But please welcome Dorothy, and I just wanted to introduce her. All right, let's talk a little, yeah, thanks, Dorothy. I've got a few things I want to go through here. So first, I want to congratulate, obviously, President Trump, if you like him, or if you love him, you like him, or you dislike him. It was the most historic election in my lifetime. Some of you know, some of you don't know, I have had the honor to work for President Trump for the last two presidential elections, and it was an honor, and I can't express how proud I am to have had that opportunity. I got it by accident, honestly, and I'm just really happy for him. And I know that many of you may have seen me in a red hat the other night, that's probably true, on a lot of different news channels, it was a little bit big red hat. But anyways, congratulations to him and all of us who need to unite and get behind our country and see where we end up. The second person I want to congratulate, and I'm moving down by chain of command here, is Senator Rick Scott. Senator Rick Scott, I was on his Veterans Coalition team this time. I've known Senator Scott for over a decade. This is his biggest victory in all of his elections, he won by 13 points. It was enormous. Most of his has been less than 1% or 2% at most. So big night for Senator Scott. But even a bigger thing's going to happen next Wednesday, and it's big for Florida. He's up for Majority Leader with two other people. It'll be a vote with senators from other states, and has a very good chance. So if you know any senators from another state, reach out to them and ask them to vote for Senator Scott. Congratulations to Steve and Ashley. It's good to have you on the board. I look forward to working with you guys in the future. Steve, obviously, congratulations, I know you're sitting in the back, but we'll see in the future and look forward to working with you as well. I want to congratulate the Blue Angels. Last week, they had their end-of-year celebration. Some people said there was a traffic problem out there, I know there was, but putting 130,000 people on the base, it's a math issue. I talked to the sheriff, I talked to the base, they're pushing people through. We're very fortunate to have the Blue Angels here. Obviously, the Thunderbirds was an additional blessing, but we get the problem, the base gets the problem, the sheriff gets the problem. We understand the restrictions on Blue Angels as well as Gulf Beach Highway. We're going to have to figure something out, as well as Vice Admiral Gray knows the issue. Last week, we talked about the installation in San Antonio. So that's a moving discussion, it's not forgotten, trust me, I hear it. All right. So again, tomorrow's going to be a big day. Escambia High has their Veterans Day celebration. It's really more for a memorial, even though it's in Veterans Day, for all the students that went to Escambia High that died in war. It's a very moving ceremony. I went last year. It's very moving, I'll be honest. I teared up last year, it was such a powerful ceremony, and I just want to do a shout-out for Escambia High for doing that. And then on Monday, we have three things. I know the Gulf Coast Veterans, Lumen, some of the folks you know, have a parade at 9:00, maybe you'll be riding in a car or something. Then we've got the Veterans Park folks having a service at 11:00, and then on the beach at 2:00, and I'll try to attend most of those, and if any of you are out, please come and attend those as well. All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hofberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners and Escambia County citizens. It is truly an honor to sit here tonight as your District Four County Commissioner. I want to thank you for trusting me with this responsibility, and it is with sincere humility that I accept the privilege to advocate for our community. Every day, I am encouraged by the resilience and the passion of our citizens, and I am looking forward to taking that passion and rolling it into meaningful movement for our community forward. I am here to ensure that your voices are heard and your needs are addressed. Thank you for your trust, your support, and your engagement. Together, we will continue to build an Escambia County that is united, safe, and thriving, and somewhere that we are all proud to call home. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Yes. Bravo. Thank you, Commissioner, and I want to thank my colleagues for their well wishes and a couple of folks from the public forum, very pleased and, you know, very humbled as well to have an opportunity to serve again. Michael Rhodes, Parks and Rec Director, is not here with us this evening because he's attending the SEC Women's Soccer Tournament at Ashland, Brazodahan. Today was the semifinals. This afternoon at 3:30, the second game will begin at 6:00 tonight, and hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to make it out there. At some point in time, the championship game will be on Sunday afternoon, and it's the third year of hosting it. It's been a fantastic, it was a fantastic win for our community to bring it here, and it's been a great, it's been a great event every year. We're also making a lot of progress on a huge project in the heart of Cantum and at Muskogee Road and Highway 29. It's going to be called Paper Park, but it's through a partnership that took a long time to actually get inked with international paper in Escambia County. But we've made a lot of headway on the construction of the walking track around the exterior of the property, as well as installation of disc golf course, and I saw some pictures today with a lot of progress on a very nice playground that's going in there. So I think that's going to be fully up and running here in the next just week or so. It's, you know, sometimes partnerships take a while, and that one certainly did take a while. And I want to recognize a friend that passed last week, I was unable to make the service, but Ricky Wiggins, who many of you knew, he was a builder, and his brother Lamar Wiggins built houses for many, many years. Ricky was a stalwart in our community, and he passed away. Service was last Monday, and just the thoughts and prayers out to his friends and family, of which there are many, many friends and family that Ricky leaves behind. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to offer condolences to Rich Powell and his family and their extreme loss that they experienced earlier in the week. Those services will be next Tuesday at Marcus Point Baptist Church, but our hearts and prayers go out to him and his family. It's just unfathomable what he's going through right now. I also want to, you know, I have some great directors, I have a great team that we work with, and I want to say this about Horace Jones, enjoy Blackman. I've known these two people forever. They're the most honest you'll ever meet, and they work hard, and guys, I stand with you and behind you 100%. I don't care who walks at that podium. I'm not going to take that. It's uncalled for, and I'm not going to take it. I love you guys, you all do a fantastic job, as do all of our directors, all of our team, and all of our managers, and the boots in the field, the guys on the ground. That's where the work gets done at. That's where the magic happens. So I support y'all. I do have one thing I want to read for John Robinson. He couldn't be here tonight, but he participated with FDLE, and they sent a brief letter. It says, "John Robinson represented your department with professionalism while working with criminal justice staff to develop the 40-hour advanced course investigating crimes against animals and the 16-hour specialized course recognizing crimes against animals. His knowledge and experience with the subject matter were essential to the success of this project. We sincerely appreciate your agency's support of our ongoing efforts to provide quality training, curricula for the state's criminal justice officers." I'll tell you, if you want to spend an interesting day in a department, go to animal services. I've never heard so many unique experiences, I'll say it like that, from folks, and it's just a really, they got 400 dogs over there, and they never quit barking. And I don't know how they do it over there, but they do a fantastic job. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Next on the agenda, Commissioner Magosh?
I'm sorry? I was not going to mention Chief Powell, Rich Powell's situation, and Wes, thank you for bringing it up. But to, whether you're a director administrator or whether you're elected, the amount of abuse that you take in it trickles down to your family and your children, and to lose a child, I mean unexpectedly. And so I've been in constant communication with him, and so Chief Powell, and I know Deputy Nash, all of y'all are praying with him, our prayers are with him, and we certainly understand the enormous amount of pressure that happens on those who are around you when pressure comes your way. So our prayers are with him, and Wes, thank you for bringing it up. I wasn't going to bring it up because we've had a lot of confidential conversations, but Chief Powell, we're certainly praying for you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Commissioner Magosh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As you know, as you all know up there, the work that we do, we can't do it without support. We can't do it without help. We can't do it without great appointees that serve on the boards. I am leaving office, and I appreciate staff working with Angela and my office to make sure that we had very nice plaques for the folks who have served on my boards and committees, and so I'm thankful that many of them, most of them, have been able to attend tonight, and I want to take a moment of personal privilege here to recognize each and every one of them one at a time. Mike Godwin, please come forward. Mike, Mike has been a great, great friend to this board and to me, and he has served in multiple roles in the county going way back, but he has served as my member of the Board of Adjustment recently, from May 25 of 2017 through November 18, 2024. And for that, I appreciate it. These boards, some of them require a lot of time, a big commitment, and Mike, to the best of my knowledge, has never missed a meeting, am I right? So let's give a round of applause for Mike for his dedication. Want to get a picture? You want to get a picture? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you've done. Without question, the most difficult board to sit is the planning board. They make, they make decisions, I'll tell you, as a county commissioner, I'm glad I don't have to sit on that board. I mean, so thank God for those citizens that serve at the pleasure of each board member that serve. This individual is here tonight, and I'm going to recognize him. Jay Ingwell, can you come forward, please? Jay took the assignment right after I was elected in 2016. Now, he still works, he's a retired military man, still works a full-time job, and has been a stalwart on that planning board. And I've got to say, on these boards, sometimes your appointee doesn't vote the way you would. And multiple times, you know, I would watch, I never reached out to him, I never put a thumb on him, I trusted him. He lives in Beulah like I do, and he's made a lot of decisions, frankly, that were very good, a few that I would have done differently, but I just want to say to you, Jay, thank you for your service, eight years on a planning board, no compensation, sometimes five, six, seven-hour meetings. Thank God for everyone that serves, but give it up for Jay Ingwell for your service. Here's another great, dedicated citizen, passionate about the marine environment, and long-serving, nine years. I'd like to invite up to the podium Captain Mark Moore. Captain Moore has served on the Advisory Committee as the District One Representative from September of 2016 through November 18 of this year. I appreciate your service, I appreciate your service to the community, and I appreciate your dedication to the marine environment. Thank you very much, Captain Moore. We had a vacancy come up just not too long ago, and this gentleman stepped up to fill it. And again, you know, we have a hard time, some of these committees, like the Mass Transit Advisory Committee, we just have a difficult time filling them, but this gentleman, Donald Lorch, he stepped up and served on the Marine Advisory Committee for me for the last year and a half, so I appreciate his service. Don Lorch, please come forward. He served on the Marine Advisory Committee from July 18, 2023 through November, and he will serve through November 18 of 2024 when my time on this board concludes, and I appreciate your service. Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, this one's last, and this one's very, very special. I've known Bridgette Brooks for 15 years, and she is tireless advocate for this community, dedicated, she's been president of the PTA, I knew her from when I was back on the school board, and when I was elected to this position, I had a lot of people putting a lot of pressure on me to put their guy on the Island Authority. I never even thought twice about it. I knew the right person with the right disposition and the right temperament was Bridgette Brooks. And so Bridgette has served eight years on the Island Authority, she's currently the chairman, and Bridgette, if you come forward. Bridgette and her husband Larry are just the salt of the earth, the greatest people, fantastic, and Bridgette, thank you so much for your service on the Island Authority. Thank you very much. Let's give it up for Bridgette Brooks. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and my final comment on this will be, to all of those who currently serve on these boards and committees, you may not always know it, you may not hear from your representative upon this dais, but I will tell you, your service is appreciated, it's vital. These boards and committees, they do very important work, the Island Authority, the Marine Advisory Committee, so thank you to everyone, everyone who serves on those committees. Thank you very much. Oh, Steve?
Absolutely. Well, this wasn't part of agenda review, but it is going to be part of the board meeting this evening. We do have something for you, Commissioner, and this is not a part of the proclamation, no one asked me for any personal anecdotes, but, you know, you mentioned your time on the school board. That's where I first remember interacting with you when I was on the Public School Foundation for 10 or 12 years, and we would come and we would advocate for partnerships and advocate for help from the school board, from the superintendent's office, and, you know, we always received that, and I want to thank you for that. You know, it's unfortunate that Sally is out of town, and that Gary and Chris are out of town as well, but you're left with your colleagues and friends that are here this evening, but we do have something for you. It's eight years is a long time, 18 years is even longer. It's a long time to be under scrutiny and under the microscope, and you've survived and you've produced, and the production is what you see when you drive around District One, and if you look back eight years, it's nothing like what it looked like before. So... So you've produced for your district, I think, in an unprecedented manner. But I do have a proclamation. So Commissioner Jeff Magash was first elected to represent Escamia County's District One in 2016 and re-elected in 2020, serving the citizens of District One and all of Escamia County for eight years, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to improving his district and advocating for all of his constituents. During his two terms, Commissioner Magash served as the chairman of the board for the year 2017, 2018, and '21, '22, and as vice chairman for 2016, '17, and 2020, '21. Commissioner Magash has served his community in numerous capacities throughout his tenure on our board, serving as chairman of the Value Adjustment Board, in addition to serving on the Florida-Alabama Transportation Planning Organization, as well as chairman of that board for a tenure. The Tourist Development Commission, I believe chairman of that board for a tenure as well.
I didn't get that one.
We'll work on that. He'd still be an affiliated member with an interest in the tourism industry. Pensacola Escamia Area Economic Development Commission and more. Commissioner Magash has a long history of dedicated public service in Escamia County, joining the Escamia County Commission only after serving Escamia County School Board for 10 years as its District One member. In addition to his service as an elected official, Commissioner Magash is an active volunteer in the community with a particular passion for supporting organizations that benefit children and the military, volunteering with organizations including the Boy Scouts of America, Waterfront Rescue Mission, March of Dimes, Relay for Life, many more. During his tenure as a county commissioner, Commissioner Magash actively interfaced with his constituents via his monthly Coffee with the Commissioner events, of which there were...
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. How about that? That's something. That's something. Both in-person and virtual, along with frequent town hall meetings, keeping District One residents informed and engaged. Commissioner Magash spearheaded numerous projects to enhance the quality of life for District One residents, including the construction of the Bellevue Library, which was your first public library in the district, I believe. A new Beulah Fire Station, a Pridita Key multi-use path, Pridita Key Boat Ramp, along with numerous road, sidewalk, and drainage improvement projects, including the Longleaf Drive, road widening and bridge replacement, Bearfoot Estates drainage improvements, Klondike Road Bridge repairs, Muldoon Road sidewalks and lighting, many, many more, in addition to numerous playground and park improvements throughout District One. Commissioner Magash actively advocated for maintaining public access on Pridita Key beaches and made numerous improvements to public access areas, working with public safety to expand the Pensacola Beach lifeguards coverage to include a lifeguard tower on Pridita Key, making the public beach area safer for beachgoers. Commissioner Magash has worked on initiatives to plan for and enhance the future of District One community, including the Beulah Master Plant as well as Outlying Field Aid. Commissioner Magash worked diligently with the Transportation Planning Organization, state legislators, and the Florida Department of Transportation to help secure $240 million to fully fund the Beulah Interchange Project, which will provide much-needed access to a rapidly growing area of District One. Commissioner Magash has devoted countless hours in service to his constituents over the past eight years with our board, working to improve the quality of life for all District One residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Escamia County recognizes and thanks Commissioner Jeff Magash for his dedicated service to residents of District One and to all of Escamia County. Board of County Commissioners, Stephen Berry, Chairman, District Five; Ashley Hoffberger, Vice Chairman, District Four; Jeff Magash, District One; Michael Kohler, District Two; Lumen May, District Three. Commissioner, congratulations.
Thank you.
Personal privilege extended.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I must admit, I did not expect this. I did not anticipate this. I was hoping to make it somewhat low-key with the things, my remarks that I made at Commissioners Forum. But you know, as I drove today into the parking structure, there was a lot of lasts. It was the last time I'm going to drive up there, the last time I'm coming to my office, more than likely, the last time I'm coming down here. And probably unless something goes really off the rails, this will probably be the last time I'll be at this podium too. So I just want to reiterate, and I thank you for your consideration of the time. I just want to reiterate just how grateful I am, how gratified. Being a member of the school board when all three of my children were in the schools, the public schools of Escamia County, where I'm a very, very big champion of public schools, and having the opportunity to be on the stage when my daughter graduated from Pensacola High School, the school that I graduated from. Who gets to do that? Who gets to be that fortunate? Two years later, when my son graduated from West Florida High School and I got to be on the stage and hand him his diploma, who gets to do that? So fortunate. When my youngest son graduated in 2018, I was not able to be on the stage because I was no longer a school board member. I was here on this board. But I did get good parking and I got a good seat. So there's been so many different things. And you just can't encapsulate it into a couple of minutes. But that's why I just want the word, the takeaway from tonight to be that Jeff Magash is grateful. He's grateful for a great family. His faith, I'm grateful for my faith in God because you need it. You need it in this job. You don't got that, you got nothing. You don't got a strong family. You don't have faith in God, you got nothing. So I'm thankful to all the citizens. I'm thankful to my family for tolerating this 18-year endeavor that I've been in. And I want the citizens to know that this has been the honor and the privilege of my life. I will look back with fond memories, the good times, the bad times, the memories. I'll look back fondly and I will miss this. But as I said before, I'm bullish on the future of Escamia County. I know that we've got great things in the works and I'm rooting for you guys as I leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is going to be the presentation of the 45th anniversary with the recognition of Escamia County as a council commissioner, manager, former government. Mr. Administrator, if you might join me at the podium. And Mark Ryan, if you might make your way.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Armed Forces County Commission, County Administrator, Marina, County Attorney, Clerk of the Court, County Staff, and amazing residents of Escamia County. My name is Mark Ryan and I'm a retired city manager of more than 40 years in Brevard County on Florida Space Coast. I manage three cities in the same county. I've been appointed a volunteer senior advisor from the Florida City County Management Association, and one of eight in the state of Florida, to share my experiences with cities and counties to help them grow and prosper. On behalf of the Florida City County Management Association, I'm privileged to present Escamia County Board of County Commissioners with a certificate celebrating 45 years of the council commissioner, manager, former government. On behalf of the Board of Directors of FCCMA and the International City Management Association, we offer our sincere congratulations on this achievement. The council manager, former government, is very similar to a corporation. We have a board of directors, you, the commissioners, a CEO, the city administrator, and the stakeholders, the residents of your county. In Florida, nearly 70% of Florida cities are under the council commissioner, manager, former government. Of the 67 counties, all but two have a county administrator. You have a commission that works well together and I applaud you for that. You have the best interests of your community at heart and it shows. You also have a county administrator who's leading your county when it has a wealth of institutional knowledge, has helped the community through various troubles such as COVID and hurricanes, but has also helped the community move forward, move forward in such a positive way to get your goals implemented. You have an amazing team, Mr. Marina. And too often, we hear the negative about the city and the county staff. Not here. You have an amazing team and an amazing leader. And with that, and recognition of all your accomplishments, I am proud to present to you this certificate honoring 45 years of the council commissioner, manager, former government. With your apologies, I have a three-hour drive to go home.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Administrator. Next is going to be proclamations. I entertain a motion for the proclamations.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Item pass is five to zero. Commissioner Hoffberger, as she makes her way down, first proclamation is to be extending sincere congratulations to Yulame Stevens on her 100th birthday. Absolutely.
I want to thank former Commissioner Wilson Robertson for nominating you and letting us know to celebrate your birthday. Ms. Yulame Stevens, a longtime Escamia County Florida resident, is celebrating an incredible milestone of a century of life, turning 100 years old on November 16th, 2024. And Ms. Stevens was born as Yulame Grease on November 16th, 1924, in Bruton, Alabama, to parents Riley T. Grease and Albertis Alice Grease, and was the oldest of three siblings. And Ms. Stevens grew up on their family farm in Bruton, later moved to Pensacola in 1942 upon graduation from WSNL High School. And she remained in Pensacola in Escamia County after meeting her husband George L. Stevens while waitressing at the Pensacola Dairy Company, also known locally as the Dairy Bar or the Milk Bottle. And after she and her husband had two children, Roland and Pat, Ms. Stevens embraced her role as a stay-at-home mother, serving as homeroom mother at their school and a Girl Scout troop leader. And once her children entered high school, Ms. Stevens began working in a credit union and finance for our local credit bureau and department stores, including Montgomery Wards and WT Grant, remaining devoted to her family throughout her career. And Ms. Stevens has been a woman of faith throughout her long life, growing up in a small missionary Baptist church in Bruton, and later attending Northside Baptist Church and Olive Baptist Church in Pensacola. And Ms. Stevens is described as a loving and giving person who is affectionately called Granny Steve by her family and many others who know her and love her. And Ms. Stevens has been fortunate to watch her beautiful family grow over the years, with five generations living today, including four grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren, all of whom she talks about frequently and loves dearly. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Escamia County, Florida, wishes Ms. Ella May, Yulame, sorry, Stevens a happy 100th birthday. We extend our sincere congratulations on this monumental occasion and wish you and your family continued health and happiness over the years to come. Happy birthday.
Wilson and Anna, see former, my dear friend, former city council member, PC Wu here as well. Would y'all like to come up and maybe take a photograph with Ms. Stevens as well? Fantastic. Thank you again. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffberger. Next is going to be adopting the proclamation, commending and congratulating Ms. Rayla McCoy, Administrative Assistant, Engineering Department, for her selection as Employee of the Month for November 2024. I see Joy and Chris. You have the floor.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to give them a minute to shift around. Come on down, Rayla. Rayla has been working with the county for a little over 30 years now, so a lot of you know Rayla and probably didn't realize that I stole her from the downtown crowd. And we're so proud to have her now in engineering. She actually began her employment with Escamia County in June of '94. So you were 15 perhaps, maybe? And she's now working in construction management as administrative assistant. And on the business side, she's no slacker. She has assisted engineering project managers and the program managers in tracking and multiple applications for over $100 million in grant funding. You all know about this, but this is the lady that helps us keep it in line. She's also working with this, tracking the drainage calls and those issues on our website. So those are important features, but that's probably not the thing we're the most proud of to have and the value that we have for Rayla. Rayla is more importantly to us, and I'm going to try not to cry, a source of inspiration, a source of counsel, a source of positive thoughts and love. And that's just when the things are tough. In the everyday life, she has been a member of the Hillcrest Baptist Church over 20 years and she teaches special needs Sunday School. And if that wasn't enough, she's also a mentor to special needs children. And that includes us, by the way. In some ways, we have our own special needs. But we are a family. We're a dysfunctional family in our own way. But we want you to know how much you mean to us. And you know, you might be wife, a mother, and a grandmother, but you are our sister, our friend, and we love you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a long time since I've been down here. Gosh, I didn't realize this was going to be your last meeting. So thank you for everything. I want to start off, I wrote down what I wanted to say, but I want to thank you for showing up in my neighborhood and asking what you could do. I'm going to cry too. I do appreciate that service. I appreciate the support that you've shown for staff over the years. Like I've heard it and I appreciate that. So that means a lot. I'm really humbled to accept this recognition. And I'm only here because of the people that I work with. I don't feel like I deserve it because I think that we all work together as a team. And I'm so blessed to call these people, there's a lot of them that aren't here and there's a lot of work that gets done. We have a lot of work still to do with all the grants and flooding. And I think we take a lot of complaints, you know, on a daily basis. And I think most of the time, people just want to be heard. And I think when they feel like they're heard and then you can explain the process of how things work, then they're a lot more understanding. So that's something that's important to me. I think working together as a team and encouraging each other is really important. And Joy did rescue me 15 years ago. I loved working downtown, but I didn't realize how much, Sharon Peacock told me how much I was going to love working in engineering and she was really right. And then I've worked for, I've had some amazing bosses. And Rob McCracken has been amazing. His wisdom, foresight, encouragement... His wisdom, foresight, encouragement, and just constantly being positive is truly a guiding light to everybody in our department. I'm really proud of the work that we do and the improvements that we make in our community. I drive around and see projects that we're working on, and it makes me proud. I point it out to my family and go, we did that. You know, it's important. My grandchildren know which projects that we worked on, so that's kind of cool. So I wanted to say my at-work family, your love and belief in me have been an anchor and a blessing, and I'm thankful for each one of you. And again, thank you for this honor.
Yes, sir. Next is going to be adopt proclamation declaring November 2024 is National Epilepsy Awareness Month. Michelle Kohler is making his way. And it's Michelle in the audience? Yes, there we go.
All right, I'm going to read this. On behalf of the National Epilepsy. Okay. Whereas November is recognized as National Epilepsy Awareness Month, celebrating the unflattering strength and courage of epilepsy patients alongside their families, friends, and caregivers. And whereas although 3.4 million people, 470,000 of them children and their families are impacted by epilepsy in the United States, there's still a lot of work to be done to combat the misconceptions and stigma, excuse me, around this disorder, and to shed light on the multiple challenges that people with epilepsy face in their daily lives. And whereas organizations such as Epilepsy Alliance Florida drives advocacy campaigns to spread awareness and prove outcomes for people with epilepsy, and provide programs and services to help effective individuals navigate life with epilepsy while providing comprehensive prevention and education services, case management, and medical and psychological service. And whereas the 2024 Epilepsy Alliance Florida strives to provide aid to more than half a million Floridians living with epilepsy through participation in Shine Your Light on Epilepsy Initiative, which seeks to promote acceptance and destigmatize the lives experience of people with epilepsy. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners hereby declares November 2024 is National Epilepsy Awareness Month in Escambia County, Florida, and encourages residents to spread awareness about the struggles faced by people with epilepsy, combat misinformation about this disorder, and together help improve the quality of life of those affected and their families. Board of County Commissioners of Escambia County, Florida, Steve Berry, Chairman, District 5, Ashley Hoffberger, Vice Chairwoman, District 4, Jeff Bregash, District 1, Mike Kohler, District 2, Lumen May, District 3. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for recognizing Epilepsy Awareness Month for November. I'm just going to say very quickly, when I started this job with this, I really didn't know what epilepsy was. And then I put on Facebook that I had this job with Epilepsy Alliance Florida, and I had all these people in my inbox, babysitters, people I'd known my whole life. When I had epilepsy when I was growing up, I have it now. My sister has it. My daughter has it. No one ever talks about it. So it's kind of a silent, it's out there. One in 26 will get it. And it's something I knew, and there's a lot more to learn. So thank you all for paying attention. I appreciate you all.
Michelle, thank you. And I appreciate you reaching out to my office, but getting Commissioner Kohler to read it. I mean, it shows your loyalty. Good seeing you.
If Kevin Monfita, as well as animal shelter folks, would come forward. Evening. Even without, even without Mr. Director here, a lot of folks attending, thanks to, thanks to all of you for taking the time to come this evening. And so the Humane Society of the United States recognizes the first full week of November as National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week, celebrating the hard-working men and women of our local animal shelters who provide compassionate services to animals and people in our community. The Escambia County Department of Animal Welfare works in partnership with the community to create a safe, healthy, and caring environment for Escambia County citizens and its animals. The Department of Animal Welfare consists of the Animal Welfare and Adoption Center and the Animal Welfare Enforcement Divisions, working tirelessly each day to protect the health and welfare of animals by promoting citizen safety, responsible pet ownership, and education in the importance of spaying and neutering to help mitigate animal overpopulation. During the last fiscal year, the Animal Welfare and Adoption Center kept 302 lost pets safe until they could be reunited with their families, found new homes for 1,840 pets through adoption, and transferred 249 pets to partner rescue organizations to make room for other lost animals. While the Animal Welfare Enforcement Division responded to over 10,000 calls for service, investigated over 5,000 nuisance or cruelty complaints, and addressed 3,750 roaming at-large complaints. In 2023, the Department of Animal Welfare received a grant from the ASPCA to fund an animal search and rescue team comprised of members of Escambia County Animal Welfare and Escambia County Fire Rescue to be deployed during disasters and to be trained to conduct swift water rescues, slackwater rescues, large animal rescues, and rope training. Animal Welfare is dedicated to building strong community partnerships to help raise awareness of their programs and services, and participates regularly in community outreach programs and adoption events, including Paudy Graze, Barktoberfest, the Bissell Pet Foundation's Empty the Shelters adoption event. And thanks to a strong partnership with Wolfgang Pensacola, Escambia County Animal Welfare was the benefactor of the Paudy Graze in 2023 and 2024, raising nearly $40,000 towards emergency veterinary care, heartworm sponsorships, enrichment programs, new playground equipment for the animals, transports, training, and supplies. The shelter has been announced as the benefactor of the 2025 Paudy Graze event as well, to be held in downtown Pensacola on February 16, 2025. These accomplishments would not be possible without the dedicated efforts of the staff at the animal, at the Department of Animal Welfare, as well as the fosters and the volunteers who help care for the animals that are in our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Escambia County hereby designate the week of November 3rd through November 9th, 2024, as National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week in Escambia County, urging all citizens to join in recognizing animal welfare staff and to acknowledge the substantial contributions they make for our four-legged friends in Escambia County. Board of County Commissioners, Stephen Berry, Chairman, District 5, Ashley Hoffberger, Vice Chairman, District 4, Jeff Bregash, District 1, Mike Kohler, District 2, Lumen May, District 3. Thank you very much for being here. When your name's on the agenda, you get to speak. So the downside of it.
Well, I'm not John, so I won't say too many words. I just want to say thank you very much. We appreciate it. We have a really hard-working staff here. They do a ton of stuff for the animals in the county and the citizens in the county. So we appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And as a proud owner for eight years of a black lab that was adopted through the animal shelter, we are, we, my wife and I and our children are very appreciative of the work that you do as well. Thank you very much. Apologize. Next is going to be the Years of Service Award for Willie Carter, Jr. At EK. I see Rodriguez and Thaddeus coming forward.
This is actually, I just, an honor just to be able to represent, you know, up here right now, just being someone from this community, homegrown director, being able to give someone like Mr. Carter this actual award. Now, before we even get to that, Mr. Carter, I know you've actually heard me say this, and I just want to say this is just again, out loud to you. You are a living legend in this community. And without an individual like yourself exemplifying all the hard work that you've actually committed yourself to, I wouldn't be who I am today. When I hear my mom say things like, Mr. Carter was my bus driver, which allowed me to be able to get to where I need to go, I want you to know that I would not be who I am today if it wasn't for individuals like yourself. So I know I thank you all the time, but I just want to just thank you again in open form. And now, again, Mr. Carter, something that we're actually doing that hasn't been done, I want to give you this first, right? Mr. Carter, he's receiving that honor from the National Safety Council in recognition of his unwavering commitment to the safety and his dedication to the citizens of Escambia County. For 45 years, 45 consecutive years, he has driven an astounding 2,817,360 miles without a single accident or incident. That's a testament to a skill, responsibility, and diligence on the road. Over Mr. Carter's 50-year career, he has safely transported countless passengers, covering over 3,130,400 miles for Escambia County Area Transit. Again, that's, that within itself, Mr. Carter. You know, I appreciate that because something that the one person I know gave birth to me in this world, you transported a horse. So thank you so much. So your remarkable achievements reflect the lifetime of service and dedication to ensuring the safe transit of the community that you serve, right? So I just want to just thank you. You know I got to shake your hand because you're a living legend. Now, to the proclamation. Whereas Willie Carter, Jr. has dedicated 50 years of service as a professional bus operator for Escambia County Area Transit, consistently delivering outstanding customer service to his colleagues, superiors, and the citizens of Escambia County through his exceptional safe driving, courteous demeanor, and disciplined work ethic. And Mr. Carter began his career on October 12, 1974, skillfully transporting Escambia County's most valuable asset, its citizens. Throughout his impressive tenure, Mr. Carter has adapted to numerous advancements in transportation technologies, mastering modern systems such as double maps, Zonar, and most recently Pass Paseo, to ensure the safety of his passengers and the bus before and after every trip. Mr. Carter regularly participates in scheduled training sessions, enhancing his ability to drive safely and stay updated on office policies, procedures, and changes in local and federal traffic laws. And Mr. Carter has set an extraordinary standard for public service and safety, and has driven 2 million, again, 2,817,360 miles over 45 years without an accident, and earned commendation from the National Highway Safety Council for his exceptional safe driving record. Over his 50-year career, he has driven more than 3,130,400 miles, demonstrating unparalleled dedication and expertise. And Mr. Carter exemplifies commitment to his profession and community, frequently covering additional shifts and working overtime when needed to ensure reliable service. And Mr. Carter is a true, a true living legend, known for his reliability, compassion, and engaging personality, and remains steadfastly devoted to his job and the citizens of Escambia County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Escambia County, Florida, expresses appreciation to Willie Carter, Jr., and recognizes his achievements and dedication for his 50 years of faithful service to the citizens of Escambia County. Board of County, sign. Board of County Commissioners, Stephen Berry, Chairman, District 5, Ashley Hoffberger, Vice Chairwoman, District 4, Jeff Bregash, District 1, Mike Kohler, District 2, and Lumen J. May, District 3. Thank you so much, Mr. Carter.
First, I want to thank Mr. District 1 individual there. I remember him from way back. And he always, he didn't know me one day. We was at a church, and I walked up to him, and I spoke to him, and he said, I don't know you. And I told, and I told him who he was, and I told him about that, and that was pretty good. And he's the last guy. And Lumen May is the one that started calling me a living legend. It's been called me that a long time ago. We played softball together, and I always held my grounds. Most of the guys were much younger than what I was back during those days, but I had in my heart to do whatever has to be done. Speaking of me driving a bus, a lot of the guys at the garage, they say I drive very slow. One thing about driving slow, you pay attention to what you're doing.
That's right.
And I really don't talk to many people while I'm driving. That's not a good thing to do. Just drive it. Watch what you're supposed to do. And I've been driving a long time, and each time I get ready to think about retiring, it's not in my heart. You know, I'm in, just about 80 years old now. And I went to a little party the other day, and I sat up there and I spoke, and then people were looking for me to say that. And I told them point blank, I'm not ready to retire. You know, you sit around the house all day long, that's not good for you. You got to be accurate. And I'm that type of guy. I ride bicycle, I walk around the block, and I keep my eyes open. And when I get up to go to work in the morning, it's unbelievable. The clock don't wake me up, I wake the clock up. That's the way I work. And when they ask me to work, I don't hesitate about coming to work. And, you know, I'm getting a little bit older now. There's nothing wrong with me, but a lot of time I have doctor's appointment, and I go to my doctor's appointment. Believe it or not, when I go to the doctor and say, you weren't here today, why didn't you call? They know. And I sit there and talk with them about getting my appointment, make it, just don't worry about it. We already got it taken care of. I'm not going to stand up here and talk a whole lot. My heart is good, and I continue doing what I'm doing. And Mr. Penborough, I appreciate you supporting me like that. Mr. Davenport, you do the same thing that these two young ladies come in here. And if I need any assistance, I get it from them. I have good touch with management. And I hope other people, when they get a job, they do the same thing. All you have to do is go to work and do what you have to. If you have an emergency on a job, your manager will let you, excuse me, will let you go. So I'm going to get off this phone right now. This ain't no phone.
That's old age, Rushmore. That's old age now.
Yeah, that's old age. Okay. But all the guys up here, I enjoy. Mr. Berry?
Yes, sir.
I hadn't forgot you. I remember you a long time ago. When I walked in the door, you called my name. I heard you loud and clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay. In the name of Jesus, everybody in here, I have a good heart for you. I don't even know you, but you in my heart. Thank you. God bless you.
Mr. Chairman, Willie Rushmore. Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Willie. And when I talk about transportation, it was the great equalizer of civil rights. And through the Montgomery Bus Movement, and the transit workers became the leaders. You became the protesters. You became the people that stood up, that allowed for me to serve. And so if we go back to Commissioner Junior and Commissioner Young, you were driving before any of us. And I remember when I was going to run for office, and I walked down on Gregory Street, and you said, let's do it. And Willie, for Tony and for Kim, you and I played many, many, many days of softball together. Salvation Army. And I want to thank you for what you've personally done for this community, and just keep on driving. And Willie, let me just say this. My other colleagues were not here, but Commissioner Berry was. Mike Lowry was when we were doing union negotiations in terms of buyouts. And one of the things that I advocated for was buying you out, because I knew that you had, at that time, did about 40 years of service, and I thought you deserved your retirement. And we fought and fought to get you your money, over and over with our attorney, to make sure that you were compensated properly. And once we got you your money, you told us to keep the money because you'd rather served and take money. And you left money on the table to serve. So Willie, that's a compliment to you, and so I appreciate what you did.
I thank that, sir. I have two more statements to make. Mike Lowry is a very good friend of mine. He's the union president, but our relationship.
I thought you voted him out.
No, I never would do that for Mike. Mike is a good guy. Yeah. And he's, he's a nice guy. He does what he's supposed to do in the, in the union hall. I'm quite sure him and management have words to word, but I hope, once they get outside that door, just forget about it. Do what you have to do. Both of you guys got a job. You know, it's a wonderful thing to sit down for the employee and the management, get together and talk. You know, sometimes a decision is very hard to make. So that's the way it's supposed to be. And once again, I'm going to finish starting all over. I'm going to do it. Go ahead, Mike.
Commissioner May, you said something that's, I just want to tell a short story to end this. It's an amazing story. This is what inspired me my entire 30 years, coming up 30 years of driving. It's Willie Carter. And the story goes like this. Willie told me that when he was a young man, he rode the transit system. Willie told me that when he was a young man, he rode the transit system. And when he used to get on the bus, the driver, a white male, who happened to be the union president, by the way,
Leroy Williams.
Leroy Williams, told him he had to sit in the back of the bus. When he was hired on October 12, 1974, guess who was the individual was that was going to train him that day? And he walks out to the yard, and there's the same driver, the one that told him for his young years to sit in the back of the bus. And Willie looked at him and said, "Do you remember me?" He says, "I kind of do, but I'm not sure who are you." He says, "Well, when I was a young man, you told me to sit in the back of the bus, but today, I'm sitting in the front seat." And fifty years later, here he is.
This man got a better mind than I have, so... Wait a minute, let me finish that. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Great job. Board, we also adopted the proclamation commending and congratulating the Florida Association for Home and Community Education on their one-hundredth anniversary. They were unable to attend this evening. But did the clerk's office receive proof of publication?
Mr. Chairman, the clerk's office has received all proofs.
Entertained a motion to waive the reading?
I move we waive the reading.
All right, please vote. Waive the reading passes five to zero. Five thirty-one, public hearing to adopt the Uniform Method of Collection Resolution. Entertained a motion. We have no speakers, board.
I move the item in the affirmative, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Please vote. Five thirty-one passes five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Two items on the consent agenda. They're both routine. Thank you.
Move the clerk's report.
All right, thank you. Please vote. Clerk's report passes five to zero. Growth Management, Horace?
Good evening. We have rezoning case number Z twenty-four dash sixteen. We're asking for this item to be dropped.
I move we drop the item.
Please vote. Dropping the item passes five to zero. Five forty-five, Horace?
Five forty-five, consistent with above. Motion for this to be dropped.
Move that we drop the five forty-five.
Thank you. Thank you. Please vote. Dropping five forty-five passes five to zero, Horace?
We have rezoning case twenty twenty-four dash seventeen. From medium density residential to high density mixed use, the planning board made a recommendation for approval.
All right, Board. We have, we have one speaker on this. Would you like to hear from her?
Yeah, can we go ahead and hear from the speakers, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Meredith?
Thank you. Meredith Bush, one-two-five East in Tendencia. Planning Board did make a recommendation for approval. We've met all criteria. We would just ask that you approve.
Super. Board, I entertain a motion. That's the only speaker.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Move to approve? That's, is that the motion?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Approving the rezoning passes five to zero, Horace?
We have the five forty-six, adoption of the rezoning map. That's what just approved.
Thank you. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. All right, please vote. The five forty-six passes five to zero, Horace?
We have rezoning case twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
All right, Board, we do have, we do have two speakers.
Can we hear from the speakers first, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do. I do want to, I do want to say, I believe there's been some communication about asking for this item to be pulled for the evening as well. But we have Meredith Bush, who's in the front. Jennifer Williams is also on the list.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, to say Meredith, it's in my district, and I'm going to move to drop this and remand this back to the planning board. Okay, so, yeah, I know there's a move to deny it, but I want to send it back for further consideration.
All right, so the intent is to send it back and not just drop and bring it back to us?
Correct.
They just want it dropped.
I believe they just want to drop. The communication that I received earlier was they just want to drop the item and bring it back to December.
Well, if they just want it dropped, then we'll move to drop it then.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Item passes five to zero to drop.
Then the five forty-seven, again, motion to drop this item from the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Please vote. Five forty-seven, dropping the five forty-seven passes five to zero. Five forty-eight?
Five forty-eight is to motion for cancellation of the public hearing, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash nineteen.
All right, thank you. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Please vote. Item passes five to zero, Horace?
Then we have our recommendation for the final plats. We have the first final plat for approval is concerning Ellis Cove subdivision. Final plat.
We have, we have one speaker on three, I'm sorry, that's three-one, I apologize. We have no speakers, board. I entertain a motion for A, B, C, and D. For A, B, C, and D?
A, B, C, and D.
Thank you. All right, please vote. Item passes five to zero, Horace?
We have recommendation concerning final plat Eagle Point, phase one.
We have no speakers, board. I entertain a motion for A through D.
Move the item A through D.
Is there a second? All right, please vote. Item passes five to zero, Horace?
We have recommendation concerning Martin Preserve, final plats.
Entertained a motion for A through D?
So moved.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Please vote. Item passes five to zero, Horace?
Then we have our consent agenda for December the twelfth.
All right, we do have a speaker for the consent agenda. Andrew Bluer?
Andrew Bluer, sixty-one oh one, Midas Place. Okay, this y'all had back in August or September. Y'all remanded it back to the rezoning board. The reboarding, the rezoning board didn't do anything except change the numbers on the sign, or dates on the sign, and took new pictures of this thing. And Joy Blackman wasn't present. Horace was present, and I don't know. He's confused. He's really confused, because we had discussions about Hogan's Pit. We had discussions about Rosewood Estate, which is right next to this property. We've had discussions about Zacharia estate there, this property. And on the backside of Godwin, on Godwin Lane, you got Tanglewood Estates, which was supposed to have been done underneath the new hundred-year flood plane, or hundred-year plan or whatever. We had to do LOST money funding that Jeff Bregash pushed through for that. That was for Adam's home of Gulf Breeze. Don't know why. But then, after that, they had Amber Ridge, and with Amber Ridge, they went and did another plan that basically y'all added another holding pond on Godwin's Lane and redesigned the last project y'all did, the one before that. You had to redesign it so the water would now go east instead of going to west. And then, then we had to do another project in Floridetown off of Godwin Lane. Because of Tanglewood, hundred-year pond, couldn't hold enough water, so it actually washed out. What was that, Jeff Bregash? It washed out the backyards on Floridetown. So, you threw in a bunch of money to fix that, too. So, can you tell me what the total amount of money we wasted on Godwin Lane to fix just those two projects? And then now we got a project here that you're going to have on Bellevue Avenue. On the backside of this piece of property, there is a problem. We have Buckland Drive that has a holding pond, and that holding pond was designed to be dry. So, it would catch all the water running off of that Buckland Drive lane. It doesn't work. There's work requesting the public works to have that fixed, and public works hasn't gotten back to me on that, so I assume that it hasn't happened. And it's, they were saying about, uh, the pump trunks broke. They were saying-
That's your time, Andrew.
Well, get Joy to explain why they haven't expended Hogan's Pit until, don't, don't rezon this. Remand it back.
Andrew, that's your time. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Board, that's our only speaker. I entertain an item for-
Move the consent agenda. Move the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Please vote. Consent agenda passes five to zero. Thank you, Horace Drew. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seventeen items on the Technical Public Service Consent Agenda. There are no changes. Please hold for Speaker's car, one dash ten, and one dash fifteen.
Entertain a motion for the balance?
Move the balance.
Please vote. Balance of Technical Public Service Consent passes five to zero.
Car one dash ten, we have one speaker, Andrew Bluer. This is a recommendation concerning the request for disposition of property for mass transit.
Andrew, it's, you're up. If this is what you intended to speak about.
Well, I just didn't want y'all to rubber stamp this. I wanted to have a little bit of discussion on this. Okay, you're disposing of property of mass transit. I guess if y'all would put a distribution out there, I'd know what it is. But I just want to know, is this that EV buses we got that y'all think y'all can't charge or something? Can somebody explain that? Can you get the guy at ECAT to explain what you're doing? Is it-
Andrew, please speak to us. Okay. That's your question. Please.
Okay, basically, I want to know, is that the EV vehicles that we couldn't run because we couldn't charge them?
Okay.
And now we're going to dispose of them?
Okay, thank you. Roger, yes.
So, that actual vehicle that's actually being disposed of is not an electric vehicle. We have, Escambia County has never received any electric vehicles. This vehicle that's actually being disposed of is actually being given to Pyramid Inc., which actually provides a service to disabled and individuals who are in need of transportation. This is actually a great thing for Escambia County Board of County Commissioners, as well as Escambia County Area Transit, to provide such a service and have this ability. The vehicle has actually reached its useful life, and it has no lien from the state. The state is actually smiling on us for this service that we actually want to provide to this organization. And so, again, it feels great to be a part of this community and just be able to provide a service like we do. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, Board. I entertain a motion?
I move item ten.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I actually saw Pyramid Inc. They did a presentation at Impact One Hundred, and this made my heart happy when I saw this, so thank you.
Is that a second?
That's a second, absolutely.
Entertained a, please vote. Item passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Car one dash fifteen, we have one speaker. This is a recommendation concerning the authorization of out-of-county travel in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Board's annual travel schedule. Andrew Bluer.
Andrew Bluer, sixty-one oh one, Midas Place. We're going to have to start tightening our belt. Pam Childers here, she can't make the profit on our bankroll that we've got down, and the interest rates are going down. So, we need to not just rubber stamp all this here travel. I think we should scrutinize it. So, can you give me some examples of this here out-of-county travel that we're going to be rubber stamping? So, basically, county commissioners or administrators or anything like that want to just take a vacation. They can just take a vacation to Tallahassee or wherever they want to go and have fun, and that's it, the taxpayers' dollar, right? Thank you.
All right, Board, I entertain a motion?
I move item fifteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. Please vote. Item passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seventy-one items on the budget finance consent agenda, including Commissioner May's add-ons as car two dash sixty-nine, two dash seventy, and two dash seventy-one. Please drop car two dash thirty, the purchase order to Unity Fiber LLC for the West Florida Public Library. Hold car two dash nineteen for Commissioner Bregash to abstain. And hold car two dash twenty-eight for Commissioner Berry to abstain. Please hold for speakers, car two dash six, car two dash forty-five, two dash forty-six, two dash fifty-two, one dash seven, two dash forty-eight, two dash eight, and two dash nine.
Mr. Chairman, I want, I want to hold two thirty-two just for comment and some discussion on that as well.
Delana, is that good? You got it?
I'm just going to confirm we're holding nineteen and twenty-eight for extensions, car two six, forty-five, forty-six, fifty-two, forty-eight, eight, and nine. Oh, inset, got it. And then thirty-two as well.
For Commissioner Kohler, correct. All right, Board, sound right. I entertain a motion for the balance. Thank you. Thank you. Please vote. Please vote. Balance of the budget and finance, budget and finance passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
We have car two dash thirty that we dropped, and then we hold in two dash nineteen for Commissioner Bregash to abstain.
Yeah, you ready to go?
Yeah, go ahead, buddy.
All right. All right, I have to read this form. I, Jeff Bregash, hereby disclose that on November seventh, twenty twenty-four, a measure came or will come before my agency, which will annure to the special gain or loss of my relative Sally Bregash. She is the executive director of the Health and Hope Clinic, and this is a sheriff's law enforcement trust expenditure to support the clinic. So, I will be abstaining from this, and I will turn in the requisite form. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Super. I entertain a motion? Any motion for the item?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'd like to make a comment, though.
Sure.
I, and I know the board on LET funds, and it has nothing to do with health and health. It has to do with LET funds in general, Jeff. So, I just want to have the discussion. There's a lot of stuff on the LET funds that I went and talked to legal about. The sheriff has a lot of authority. I know the board can only turn down, we can't do much with the LET funds. But I do think that in the future, we probably need to have a discussion with the sheriff on LET funds, because this alone is more than all of our discretionary funds this month. So, it's a lot of LET funds that the sheriff has. I am in favor.
Okay, super. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. All those in favor? Any dissent? Any abstention? Item passes four to zero with Commissioner Bregash abstaining. Mr. Administrator?
Holding car two dash twenty-eight for Commissioner Berry to abstain.
Thank you. I, Stephen Berry, hereby disclose on November seventh, twenty twenty-four, a measure came before my agency, which inure to the special gain or loss of Ryan Shavers, by whom I am retained. The measure before my agency and the nature of my conflicting interest in the measure is as follows. Escambia County Board of County Commissioners meeting November seventh, twenty twenty-four, county administrators report item two dash twenty-eight concerning the contract award for divine farms, bridge replacement, and road alignment. American Rescue Plan Act Project PD twenty-three dash twenty-four point one-two-five presents a conflict of interest pursuant to statute one-one-two point three-one-four-three Florida statutes where the appearance of a conflict of interest pursuant to statute two-eight-six point zero-one-two Florida statutes, because Ryan Shavers, owner of Shavers Construction, is my client. I entertain a motion for the item?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please vote. Any dissent? Any abstentions? Myself, item passes four to zero with Commissioner Berry abstaining. Mr. Administrator?
We have several items that we're holding for speakers. Car one dash six, Chris Kerb. This is a recommendation concerning the contract award for Escambia County Environmental Justice Review of Codes and Ordances.
Chris? All right, we're testing, testing. Chris Kerb with Flood Defenders. This is an interesting contract being issued here to the Water Institute of the Gulf to review local codes and ordinances for environmental justice concepts. I was looking through the contract language there, and it does have a little public involvement there with your regular meetings with key stakeholders. It mentions advocacy organizations. I believe Flood Defenders is an advocacy organization, so I would like to be a part of that public involvement. I would also like to point out Senate Bill seventy forty that was approved this past year. We will have new environmental resource permit rules under chapter sixty-two, three-thirty, that will go into effect January twenty twenty-five. So, that may be something that, I didn't see that in the scope of work, but if you're going to be doing environmental codes- and you're going to be reviewing your land development code for environmental codes, you might want to look at Senate Bill seventy forty. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Entertain a motion.
I move item six in the affirmative.
Please vote. Item passes four to zero with Commissioner May out of the chambers. Mr. Administrator?
I have one speaker for car two dash forty-five, the recommendation concerning the contract award for Oakfield Acres. Chris Kerb.
And if you don't mind, I'll do forty-six and fifty-two while I'm here, trying to save a little time. Does that sound good? Speaking of this, this is another ARPA-funded project I mentioned at public forum. There's a lot of ARPA-funded projects on the agenda. I was hoping I'd get to the D five part that I was mentioning all the other five commissioners, but Old South Highway twenty-nine, where Ms. Brooks lives, y'all can add a project on your list of things. But anyway, project forty, Oakfield Acres, car two forty-five. That's one of our first Flood Defender neighborhoods where Cheryl Tyler was pretty active coming up here with her Belle Meade neighborhood. And I'm really interested in seeing this project move forward. I didn't see the plans on the website, but I did send an email to the project manager to send me a copy of those plans. The Chandler Street Drainage Project, I also have some, that's car two forty-six. I have some Flood Defenders that live on Chandler Street area, and that goes all the way back to when Commissioner Wilson Robertson was here. He was here tonight and had to wait on the Holesbury project with Highway twenty-nine widening for this project to happen. I can remember the road department pulled out a route system off of Palafox Street. There's dual twenty-four-inch pipes there, probably here to Sheriff over there. Remember that, Wes? That was a bad plug in that pipe. But anyway, glad to see this project moving forward as well, as well as the Stacy Road and Quintet Road project, which is car two fifty-two. Also, a Flood Defender Neighborhood Project with Margaret Hayes. So, I just wanted to rise in support. When y'all are doing good things, I should be up here telling you y'all are doing good things, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our board, entertain a motion for all three items.
So moved, Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Items pass five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, we held item forty-eight, so we thought we were going to have a speaker. That has since changed, so we need to vote on item car two dash forty-eight separately.
All right, entertain a motion for item forty-eight.
So moved.
Please vote. Item passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
I have one speaker for car two dash seven, the contract award for design permitting and construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Escamia County Dune Matrix. Andrew Bluer.
I thought the chair was supposed to call me. You're calling me? Okay. Well, here's the problem I've got here. County commissioners, it's your responsibility, the money y'all spending here, and it affects a lot of things. It affects me a lot. And just with the situation here, y'all got down there to item B, that you're going to let the county administrator be the designate, sign y'all, to sign off on this. Well, basically, on Godwin Lane, the county engineers came up with a plan-
Mr. Bluer, this is not about Godwin Lane. This is not about Godwin Lane.
It's about the money y'all going to spend.
It's about the Dune Matrix, CEI contract.
Right, it's Dune Matrix, but what I'm saying, it's about responsibility of who is responsible for making sure the contract is done properly. This here says design permitting, construction, engineering, and inspection, and you're going to have to sign off on that, right? You can't even do a road table on Godwin Lane and get it right. You can't even do a road table on there. So, why would you five county commissioners let him be in charge of this here five hundred and eight million dollars? Y'all trust him that much when he's got breach sperms on Zacharia Estates? He's got breach sperms on the Softley Field Pond, and he hasn't fixed? That's engineering. And he's signing off on stuff like that. You've got Joey Blackman signing off on that stuff. You've got same thing with Godwin Lane, with Tanglewood, that's horse, with all these different projects and stuff like that, Amber Ridge, same thing with Floridian. And y'all sign off on that. Y'all rubber stamp it. But it costs millions of dollars, millions of dollars. And then here you're going to go five hundred thousand dollars. You're going to- And what's it for? Sand dunes. Thank you.
My board, that's all the speakers. I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. Item passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Two dash eight, the recommendation concerning the design construction of the paddlecraft launch at Pretoria Bay Boat Ramp. One speaker, Andrew Bluer.
Here's where I wish Wilson Robertson was still here. He was supposed to have did a pass down to Jeff Bregash, but evidently there wasn't a pass down. That was supposed to be, that forty acres was supposed to be something. Robert Turpin just messed it up, and now that y'all want to spend another two hundred thousand dollars for a paddlecraft launch? Does it really cost two hundred thousand, I mean, two hundred, yes? Is that really right, two hundred thousand dollars for a floating dock and a floating piece of plastic that you can put a paddlecraft on and launch? Is that really two hundred thousand dollars? I would, I would like somebody to explain that to me. Why would that cost two hundred thousand dollars? Just to have a floating dock attached to a permanent dock, and then you just put a paddlecraft on it and launch it? When there's beach area, if Robert Turpin would have had to put the boat ramp out on the bay, there would be sandy beaches that you could launch your paddlecraft from or your canoe from, a sandy beach. But now we're going to spend two hundred thousand dollars of, what is this, Florida Department of Environmental Protections? Love it. And what happened, what happened to the plan of having the kids park out there and the digital library out there and the observation deck and the kiosks out there? Wilson Robertson didn't give you a pass down on that? That was in the works for almost twenty years. And we're not going to get any of that. Michael Rhodes is not here. Nobody's going to go and try to fund the things that we should do on that forty acres. But Robert Turpin, he goes and takes the silt out of the bay or whatever and piles it up there, and now that land will never be used. It's just a wasteland. Kind of like Mount Softley we got there on Softley Field.
Board, that's the only speaker.
Mr. Chairman, I will gladly and gladly move item eight forward. It's a great project.
I'll second.
Gladly.
Please vote.
Happily.
Item passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Car two dash nine, one speaker, Andrew Bluer. This is amendment two to the Eleven Mile Creek Restoration and Stormwater Enhancement Project from FDP.
Here's another one. Love it. You know, I wish that we spent as much time on Hogan's Pit as we did on the four-H property that y'all sold to Navy Federal Credit Union. I wish we had spent as much time as y'all spent talking about Spencer Field over there in Santa Rosa County. I wish y'all spent as much time as y'all spent talking about OLF eight. But you haven't spent that much time. Tell me how many times y'all have talked about the expansion of Hogan's Pit. Do you have a date for expansions of Hogan's Pit? No. But yet, you want to go and rezone that area on Bellevue Avenue when you know there's a major problem there on Hogan's Pit. But here you go. Navy Federal Credit Union ponds are not big enough. So, what are we going to do? We're going to take taxpayer money and fix Navy Federal Credit Union's problems, because people have houses flooding on Eleven Mile Creek. Why didn't county engineer and horse doing the DRC make sure Navy Federal Credit Union's ponds were big enough to take care of the water on those buildings and the parking lot? Why do we now have to use tax dollars to fix this? It disgusts me. It already disgusts you. Your heart ought to get right. You're wasting money of taxpayers' money. Y'all up there saying, well, how can I, how can I get a long-term pension? I want a state pension. Oh, no, I want a Escamia County pension. No, I want a 401K. I'm looking out for myself. I don't want to look out for the citizens of Escamia County. I don't care when I can go over there to Orange Beach and see what they have over at Orange Beach, or go to Fairhope and see what they have over at Fairhope or whatever. I want to live in Escamia County. Here y'all go and add an extra half-cent gas tax or one-cent gas tax for ECAT. I'd rather go over to Baldwin County and buy gas. Y'all spend money to expand Nine Mile Road so people can get over to Santa Rosa County faster. People can get over to Gulf Breeze faster. You can get over to Baldwin County faster. Why don't you make the people tie up in traffic or whatever and make them spend some of their revenue in Escamia County? You ought to have a payroll tax for all the people in Navy Federal Credit Union. Why do we use our tax dollars?
Board, that's our only speaker.
Mr. Chairman, I'll gladly and happily move item number nine in the affirmative.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you. Please vote. Item passes five to zero.
If you hold an item thirty-two for Commissioner Coler?
Yep.
This is actually, I think, a good story. I didn't have enough information this morning to bring it up, but I wanted to bring it up now. Obviously, we don't have time to talk, but I knew that there was issues with the ERIC contract, Mr. Chairman, and I asked Wes to look at other ways that we wouldn't lose the money, the five million dollars out of ARPA funds. And I want to give the staff accolades for moving that into the interest so that we won't lose that five million dollars, and it'll go for some of the fire safety equipment that will help with the firehouses and some other things. And so, we always get beat up on losing money, but this was actually fiscally responsible accounting, moving the money before the end of the year to make sure that we don't lose that money. And as far as the contract, I know there's a discrepancy. That's another issue between the clerk and our staff. I, I think that you're getting everything you would want in ERIC. I think it's done. Is that correct?
Yeah, substantial completion was achieved a little better than a year ago. The redundancy in the ring, substantial completion of the project was achieved a little bit more than a year ago. The ring, which provided the redundancy for the fiber service, was completed six or seven months ago. So, yeah, we're very pleased. The take rate is increasing, and it's a, it's a great thing, so, yep.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that, and I appreciate the staff looking into that. And, and I know there's some issues with invoices with the clerk, I believe, but I want to apply, move in the money so we didn't lose it. That's a big deal to me, because I didn't want to lose the money. Did you ever comment?
I don't have a conflict with staff. Where we're at is that contract expired September first of this year. We've only received six hundred and thirty thousand in billing. It was an up to six point three million in billing, so we've been asking for the invoices of a substantially completed project. So, that's where we're at. Shifting it to interest, not a problem. That's probably good, but if it's substantially complete, we should have invoices. And what's problematic for us, two weeks ago, we got an invoice for a hundred and, I don't know, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, and most of it was dated prior to the contract inception, which was around March of 2023. So, that is the back and forth between staff that we just have to work through. It's not really conflict. We just have to work through it.
Well, I think there are-
And we need invoices.
I think there are questions about the expiration of the contract being at that date or the contract being expired. I think there, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a given fact, Madam Clerk, but-
Oh, then maybe I misspoke, but it, the contract that I have on my desktop, I think, was five hundred and eighty-three days, which would be a September first, so we'll go back and review that.
I believe the staff, I believe the staffs are working on it.
Mr. Chairman, this wasn't about the ERIC project. It was about fiscally moving the money the right way so we don't lose it. I don't know all the-
ERIC project was brought up, so that's what I'm going to discuss when it's brought up, Mr. Commissioner.
Yes, sir. But since we're talking about, do we have an issue with the contract, Allison? I mean, that wasn't my intent, but do we?
No, I, I, I mean, I'm of the opinion that the contract doesn't have an expiration date. It had a project work date of, not dates, but number of days during which the work needed to be done. It was my understanding that all, all of that work has been done. I do know that there's been some back and forth on the documentation that's necessary to substantiate that work, so that's what I understood to be the back and forth.
Okay, well, hopefully, we can work that out. And, and this was not a jab. It was actually to, you know, give congratulations to both Wes and, and the accounting staff for doing what I thought was the right thing so we didn't lose any money. So, that was what I wanted to get out there.
Super, absolutely.
Of two thirty-two forward.
Thank you. Is there a second? Please vote. Item passes five to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Please, my report.
Madam Counsel?
Yes, sir. There are three action items on the county attorney's report for this evening. I can go through with them individually if you wish.
Entertain a motion. If there's no speakers on the action portion, is there a motion or conversation?
I would move all three action items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, super. Please vote. Please all vote. There we go. Five to zero. To our friends from FPNL, congratulations. Got an end date, an end date set perhaps? And if we can make it five more weeks, then we'll be in good shape. So, congratulations, Rick.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I was going to pull that aside just because Rick Byers was here, but I think he does deserve an accolade, and we went to him. He jumped over hurdles to help us out. I know our county attorney was wondering if we're going to get there, and good job, Rick, and I really appreciate it.
We're going to carry it a few blocks south and west and see if we can help you over there, but, you know, we'll do, we'll do what we can with our neighbor jurisdiction. But, Madam Counsel?
Rick, I, Rick, I know you got Florida West, and you get as many arrows as we get. So, I mean, you know, welcome to all the love you get whenever you serve.
Welcome to Facebook, buddy.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And you don't have to be on there to catch the arrows either, buddy. You don't have to participate. You can be a passive, you can be a passive target, I assure you.
And all seventeen of them are Facebook about you. And that's great. But, Rick, I want to thank you. I mean, what you don't get accolades for is when people call in our office and their lights have been turned off. Mothers with a baby, which was in Oakwood Tears, who had her lights turned off, and in the middle of the night, you had her lights turned on with infant children. So, Rick, I appreciate you, you know, getting up at, you know, midnight to make sure that that mother had her lights turned on. And so, I know Audrey calls you a lot for other ones that people just can't pay. I mean, in this economy, people can't get their, sometimes people just can't pay their bills. And, Rick, you, you've just been great in, in doing that. I know you're working three jobs right now with Florida West and FPL, but you're still responsive. So, from District Three, we really appreciate it, Rick. Thank you.
Madam Counsel?
Yes, sir. There is a discussion item. This is a carryover at the board's request from its October seventeenth board meeting regarding a request from the Children's Trust. I can refresh the board's memory of what it did at the September fifth board meeting, if you need that, or-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So I, I, I have the opportunity to have probably been around the Children's Trust since inception, and I, I serve on the board, and anytime there are children issues, I'm probably going to be engaged. I see the Deputy Mayor Alex here, and I've been working with Mayor D.C. Reeves and how they are moving forward with an interlocal. And this came before our board at the Children's Trust. And all on this agenda we're seeking is to allow for our administrator and, and our attorney to work with the Children's Trust, to work out an interlocal to where we are being able to provide an interlocal agreement with monitoring and measurements and working with the children of Scamia County. And so that's the request for this being on the agenda.
All right, Board, we do have three speakers.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you had speakers.
Yeah, do we want to give them the opportunity to speak as well? All right. First speaker is Kristen Fairchild.
Hi, I'm Kristen Fairchild with Chain Reaction. I have received many funds from the county over the years with outside agencies. We've now been moved over to the Children's Trust, and I just wanted to, to speak to the amazing job that the executive director, I know the Children's Trust had some bumps in the beginning, but under the leadership of Lindsay Cannon has done a phenomenal job. What Commissioner May just referenced in interagency agreements, what they can do in measurements and seeing that needle move forward. I know with outside agency was always difficult for this board to go, okay, we're granting this money. We know they're doing good work. Is it moving with the needle of what we're trying to do? And I just wanted to speak on behalf, which what I have seen, they do a phenomenal job. They make my job harder because we receive a grant, but that is what they're really doing, which is good. And I mean job harder in, is what you're doing, serving kids, changing education on what we're paying for. And that is what we all want. There are 3,300 nonprofits in this community. Having an agency like the Children's Trust that makes sure taxpayer dollars are being used in the right way to get what we all need is very important. So I just wanted to talk on behalf of the agency and the interagency agreement, and thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you, Kristen. Next speaker is Leah Harrison. Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Next speaker is Will Dunaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Will Dunaway. I represent the council for the Scamia Children's Trust. I'm here with the executive director to answer any questions that you have. I appreciate Commissioner May, and that's all we're looking for, is the opportunity to work with staff, to talk through an interlocal agreement so that we can put that in place. We're here to answer any questions or anything that you need to hear.
Well, thank you for navigating and bringing this forward. We, I certainly appreciate it. Thanks to Lindsay.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Lindsay. So Commissioner, I apologize. You have the floor again. That's all the speakers.
No, no, that, that, and it's simple, the request that Will had to give our staff an opportunity to talk and work it out because at the end of the day, we want things that are happening for children.
Madam Counsel, is that good enough direction from our board? Can you take that as a discussion item?
It would be super fantastic if we had a board vote because your current vote is that you denied their exemption.
What was the date of that vote?
On September the fifth.
How about a motion to rescind the action that we took on the?
Except they've paid one year. So there were three retro years that were due. We, the board voted to give them 45 days to pay. They did pay one year. They have not yet paid the 2021 or the 2022 tax years. I would just say maybe if you want to, you know, suspend their payment in, for a certain duration to see if we can work out an interlocal agreement, I.
And, and so, Mr. Chairman, and, and so, and Mike, I'll let you speak. All we're asking for those two years, and I certainly was very supportive with my, with my colleagues because of the safety and trying to get those funds to the sheriff, and that is not off the table of, of, of working with our law enforcement, but the opportunity to work with our, our mayor and work with our law enforcement and work with our, our Children's Trust on those two years is what we're, what we're asking for.
I'd like to make some discussion here because I, there's nineteen programs, Lindsay, I believe, that you fund in twenty-nine? John Sengly put a really good article out about a month ago, and I want diversity, equity, and inclusion across the county. Everyone that's a homeowner pays into the Children's Trust Fund, and I don't, I don't believe that's the case. And I have a problem with it because I know I have some really poor areas in District Two, and I don't think they're getting represented at all. And I'm gonna put that out there. That's why I have a problem with it. And I told you that, Lindsay, when we sat down, and I asked to come up with a plan. And Neighborhood Services put a plan together, and out of the 330,000 folks, the majority of it's in the city, and Commissioner May's, which I have no problem with that, but that does not represent, I don't even think Commissioner Burgash has one program in his district, and I think you have one, Commissioner Berry. That's not equitable. That's just not equitable. I can't vote for that, and I just think it's wrong. We need to make sure the Children's Trust, I don't think there's one person on the Children's Trust from District Two representing it. That may be my fault. I don't know, but, but the bottom line is, there's not representation. And when I got the only failing school in, in Scamia County, a chief out in Pleasant Grove with the most troubled kids that someone wearing ankle bracelets, I'm having a hard time getting there, man.
Mike, listen, listen, Mike, I, I concur with you. So, and, and what I'm saying is that when the interlocal we have, and I'm certainly advocating because of the request of, of, of the trust, you know, listen, I don't have a middle school in District Three. I mean, I have the highest crime in District Three. And so, I, and I've said this publicly in Children's Trust meeting, the very children that we utilize for the collateral material, particularly black and brown children from inner cities, whether it be your inner city or my inner city, quite frankly, is how we pass the tax. As soon as the tax was passed, it became for all children. And you know what? It is for all children, but you have to have a starting point somewhere. And quite frankly, you know, I believe that we have to go to where the greatest need is, and I think this is an opportunity to have further discussion. I, I don't think this is end all, but I'm saying certainly to allow for further discussion to make sure there are programs in warranty, that there are programs that are happening that.
We can do that, though, and there's only, we're only asking for 5% for Neighborhood Services out of their budget. We're not asking for 90%. 5%. I went back and looked at the numbers. You guys can still do all that with the other 95%. And the sheriff wanted the money for cameras, and I supported the sheriff on that. I think it's a good thing.
And I'm, and I'm, listen, I supported it, Mike. Mike, and I'm there, and I, and I, and Mike, listen, this is Scamia County Children's Trust, and let's be candid, you know, we're having this discussion. I mean, you know, I want our after-school programs funded. I want our summer employment programs funded that's coming from all our district. And you're right, there's a disproportionate amount of money that's funded to the city versus that's funded to the county.
Amen.
I concur with that. I mean, and that's fact. But I think give them an opportunity, give Lindsay an opportunity to work through that because I agree with you. I mean, the after-school program, the summer programs, there's probably five or six that are funded in the city that are not funded in the county. And quite frankly, there are programs that I believe that should be funded in the county that are not funded in the county.
I agree with all of that.
And so, when I'm, I would never, you know, I, I brought this because of the petition of, of mutual supporters of yours, mine, and everybody on this board to just have a discussion. And if we can't come to a resolution of an interlocal, then I think that we do reserve the right to make sure that our CRAs are safe because I do believe that if kids don't have sidewalks to walk to school, if they don't have cameras for their safety, if they can't walk to parks, if they don't have lights, then none of these programs are any good. But I think that there's an opportunity for us to walk and work together to make that happen. And this is an olive branch between the Children's Trust and the county, in my opinion, to be able to work together. But listen, wherever you go with it, Mike, I'm okay. You know, I gave my word to the trust that I was going to advocate, you know, to be of support. If that's not where you want to be on it, I mean, listen, you know.
So I have a question. Would an interlocal agreement allow us to work with you to lay out priorities as district by district?
Yes, so, sorry, it's a little high. So interlocal agreements that have happened in other areas of the state are typically the way that you manage this situation. We have two statutes. You don't know which one supersedes which. So this is the way you work through that, is an interlocal agreement. And so it can be done a variety of ways. They have ones that say, take all of this money and make sure that you put it towards some sort of children's service within this particular area, and it can be all of it or it can be some of it. So when you break it out over nine CRAs, you're talking $443,000. Some's gonna get $100,000, some are gonna get, I don't know, eight, nine hundred, you know, dollars.
But Lindsay, can I hold you up? Can I hold you up?
Sure.
I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, Mike, that this money is for CRAs identified areas of blight.
Yeah, amen.
And, and so, I mean, you know, I'm not going to support saying that we distribute this among all of this county. It's, it's not a lot of money compared to our budget, but you know what? It should be distributed. Ashley has a, a CRA. You have two CRAs.
Two and a half.
Two and a half? I mean, and, and so, if, if I happen to have the most CRAs, I just happen to have them because I have the most blights. I mean, that's by statute, that's by a plan, you know, that's by identification, measurement, the reason you have those CRAs. And so to me, you know, that this, the reason you have a TIF in the CRA is not for it to go to a general fund. You know, I mean, if, if it did, you wouldn't have a CRA. It would just go as an avalanche into the general fund if the TIF wasn't important, if the state statutes didn't allow for us to identify that there is a need within these geographical areas. And so to me, Ashley, that money has to stay within those geographical areas because that's what it's identified for, whether we allocate it or whether we allow for the trust to allocate it. But in my opinion, Ashley, you asking the question for my vote, is we're waiting on a precedent from the city, is that how do we identify those priorities, work with the trust, and then allow for the trust to help us manage where those dollars are going?
Madam?
With that administrative cost, because it doesn't cost any more administrative costs, right? I mean, we're not giving you more administrative money for that, correct?
No, but what you're getting is a service that's actually going to measure and give information back to you on whether these programs are moving the needle or not. And, and that's part of all of our contracts with all of our employees, I mean, all of our contracted entities, so.
And Mike, and Mike, I will agree. I, I think we have some of the best after-school programs. I think we have some of the, the best CRA programs, and, you know, to Lindsay's credit, she wasn't there, our programs were not funded. I mean, probably to the tune that others were funded. So I concur with you. Lexington Terrace should be funded, Forest Creek should be funded, Warranted Metal Shoes should be funded, Marina Court should be funded. I mean, you probably got, I mean, the pines, you probably got a greater need in your district. You have as many shootings as I have in my district, and that's one of the things that I've said to Lindsay privately and publicly. I mean, when, when are we gonna start allocating dollars for all of the violence that's happening in our community? And that's one of the reasons, Mike, I was full force supporting you and the sheriff on those cameras, and I'm gonna support that. I mean, I'm gonna continue to support that because I think that it's important for the sheriff, who was denied funds for his camera program, that we gotta have cameras, we gotta have lights, we gotta have security. Because if a park's not safe, I don't care how many programs you have, if a kid can't walk to a program safe, it don't matter.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if a kid can't walk to school and walk back home, he's not safe, it doesn't matter how great that program is.
My, my issue, and I'll just put this, Lindsay, if we have a small mouth that goes to CRA, I can go over to Claire Long and say, what are we doing with this? I gotta wait till you put up a plan. I gotta wait for that, see if it's going the right area. I know exactly where it's going in the CRAs for that 5%.
Hundred.
We control it. That's not that much of the budget, and it's going to the poorest kids in Scamia County. I don't see why the board has such an issue with that. It's allowed by the statute. I mean, why is it, why is it such a hangup?
Because our stat, and I'll have to let Will share that with you, but it's, it's, there's competing statutes related to how we can spend those dollars, and our obligation is to spend them on children's services. And so there's a, a fine line for us. We're wanting to do the right thing. We're not trying to be argumentative. We want to work in partnership, but we do have a conflict that we want to work through. The way other trusts in their counties or their cities have worked through this problem has been an interlocal agreement where you're able to say, I get $100,000, let's say in the Warrington CRA, I'd like you to fund, I don't know whether it's after-school, youth employment, you know, whatever it is, you can direct it, but we're still the ones that manage it for you.
Yeah, I don't know if I need someone else managing. I already have Neighborhood Services. Hey, Madam Attorney, we have, is there a difference in the statute that she's saying between what we can do and what they're saying?
Yeah, so if the, if the board has the money, it is going to have to be obligated to the CRAs that it was accrued from, and CRAs have very specific uses that you're allowed to spend that money on. Essentially, you cannot spend it on what I would call programming. So if the county has it and it goes into your CRA, you can spend it on things like sidewalks or playground equipment, but you can't spend it on things like basketball teams and basketball jerseys. That's more like programming. They can spend money on that. They would not legally, in my opinion, be obligated to spend that money within the CRA geographical areas, but politically, that may be if the board is willing to negotiate.
But they would be obligated to spend it if you had an interlocal that said this is where they're gonna spend the money. I mean, they can't just take the money and spend it where they want to spend it.
Right. Politically, the board may.
I don't know about politically, but I'm saying legally. I don't care what they can do.
If the language is in the interlocal, Allison, correct?
Correct.
If, if you have defined geographical areas or you draw boundaries.
If that's what it takes to get the board comfortable with allowing them to keep the money, then absolutely.
I'm with my, what I'm comfortable in, that the money stays in the CRA for the designated areas that it was designated for.
Then.
That's what I'm comfortable in.
And if the board is. I don't know why we'd create another layer. The statute already says it would go to our CRA.
Because you won't be able to spend it on programming, and they can. That's their argument.
But they're still gonna be able to spend 95% of what comes in for the entire county from all the people that pay into that. We're only talking about the poorest people in Scamia County. Why do I need an interlocal agreement to give money to the poorest areas of the county? I mean, I just can't get there, man. I, I gotta.
No, 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 Mike. So, Allison, what, what are you saying is that, well, what Mike is asking, like, a legitimate question. So you mean to tell me that they can't spend money on, on, if it comes to CRA, Claire can't spend money on playgrounds? They can't.
She can spend it on playground, in my opinion, she can spend it on playground, she can spend it on sidewalks, she can spend it on lighting. There are certainly things that CRAs can spend money on that help children. A hundred percent, there are things that would help children. But CRA, CRA money is designated for things that address blight. It is not designed to deal with programmatic things for children, like early learning programs or music programs or teams for athletic events.
So she couldn't buy, if Mike was doing a program at Lexington Terrace, he couldn't buy music equipment?
I think you, the way you explain it to me is no consumable item. So if it's something that a child's gonna use once and outgrow, no, but if it's something that's permanent, yes?
That, that makes some sense. I, I think any.
Some sense or all sense? Some sense or all sense. I mean, so you mean to tell me what can I, can I buy a piano? Or can I buy a synthesizer? Or can I buy a trumpet? Or what can I, what can I buy?
I would not think musical instruments would, I, off the cuff, would not assume that they would qualify unless maybe they're attached to the infrastructure, like a built-in piano or organ or something.
That's a performing art.
Yeah. I don't, I consider fine arts programs may definitely benefit kids. I would not think that that would be an allowable CRA use. But it would be a programmatic use that could be used.
Could you buy food for children?
I would not think food would be an allowable CRA use.
So Mike, I mean, listen, wherever you want to go. To me, I mean, I would just ask that we be allowed to have further, uh, clarification. But Mike, wherever you land on here.
Here's what I'd like to say. Poor kids don't get nice parks. Poor kids don't get sidewalks. Poor kids don't get to go to swim club because they don't have a ride there. Poor kids don't get to go to sailing down to Satori because I know, because I tried to get them there. And so when we're talking such a small amount of money out of the Children's Trust to help the environment of kids walking through garbage from the pines and try to make the environment better, um, I think the statute's clear, we have the right to do it. I don't need another layer. You still have 95% of your funds coming in from all of the taxpayers in the county to do a lot of great things. So I have, I have no interest in not going forward with what we voted on before. And I, and we, I don't, we couldn't, you know, I just don't think it's right. I, I mean.
Mike, Mike, so, and not in an adversarial way, I simply wanted to have a conversation of what I said to our trust, uh, uh, what I, what I said to our trust board. I mean, Will's a friend, but I mean, he's probably having billable hours that's probably going to end up against the taxpayers at some point to not end up in litigation because, you know, I often say we're oh for the season, uh, in, in litigation. So I, 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 I don't like, I, I, I don't want an adversarial position, you know? I'm not going to jump off the bridge e- either way, because at the end of the day, as long as it's going to the intended use of the end users, which are the people who are in the pockets of poverty, the people who live in CRA districts, you know, rather I give him a swing set or rather I program somebody to teach him, uh, to swing. I mean, uh, you, it's something that's happening for a child. Uh, because it's the Escambia County Children's Trust, I simply asked the administrator and the attorney to put this on there to have a discussion because of my commitment that I said to Lindsay and the board to have this in a, a, a public discussion. I think it works either way, Mike. You know what I mean? I think, you know, if there's a, a great program that Mesh Hall is running and kids need lights, or if there's a great program that Boys and Girls Club that's working at, at, over on Leonard Street, and we got more sidewalks, we got more swings, I think that it works. As you said, it's a very small amount of money, quite frankly, in, 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 in the scope of what we're doing. But in the, in, in the spirit of collaboration, in the spirit of harmony, uh, I gave Will my word that I'd bring it. I'm certainly not going to have discord, uh, with my colleague as it relates to, you know, your opinion, because I know the challenges that you have. I mean, I know children in Forest Creek are flooding. I mean, and they have to get on boats to get out of Forest Creek. I know that there's trash step, you know, stacked up at the pines, and I know you have shootings. Quite frankly, you know, and I am very involved and volunteer, have volunteered for over 50 years, 40 years of my life in intercity programs. And many of the kids that are carrying guns in my program come from your district. You know, Gulf Beach Highway is tough, Marina Court's tough, the Forest Creek is tough, as I have Oakwood Terrace, as I have Addis Court, have, uh, Morris Court, which are all the city programs. So, you know, I was just trying to have the conversation to give staff a chance to meet with their staff, to see if there is a resolution. And if it was not a resolution, that we could hold firm to just give it a little bit of time to just have that conversation. But I'm, listen, you know, 5%, you know, $400,000 over the course of 18, 20 million dollars, you know, we probably have, uh, taken, uh, more time on $400,000 than we voted on, you know, 30 million in the last hour. So I'm, I'm open. I've laid it out, Mike, and you certainly are not going to have me, uh, opposing you in the direction that you're going.
Allison, what's the right and left, uh, boundaries on this? Because they're delinquent now on the other two years, correct?
Yeah, they are, we gave them 45 days from the vote on September the 5th. That, that has passed. In the interim, they did pay one year in full, and they did send a letter asking for this conversation, basically, to approach that the board engage with them to work through an interlocal. Um, it, the, I would suggest that if the board wants to see, since it's already passed the deadline that you set, my suggestion would be that you might want to consider a motion that would extend the payment date that you set in, set back in September, that you extend it by, say, 90 days, and see if in the interim, an interlocal of some sort can be negotiated that the board wants to entertain to vote on. Or just say, we meant what we said, we've already voted on this, and at that point, you know, consider those two years delinquent. The 2024 is not due yet, so.
But my, my, let me ask you, Allison, for, for point of clarification for me, you create a TIF and those dollars end up in a CRA, correct? I mean, because the property value remains. So those dollars, no matter what we do, when they came in, you know, and the tax collector got them, those are CRA dollars, correct? So I've, I've accepted those as a CRA dollar. So now I've taken those as a CRA, CRA dollar in a TIF, and then I give it back and say, well, trust, you keep those dollars because those are CRA dollars. I mean, there's, it doesn't matter wh- where you are. I mean, whoever gets those dollars, I mean, whoever, whether it's school board, or whether it's whoever, uh, uh, tax and authority, they get those CRA, CRA dollars. They come in as a CRA dollar, and we give them back. Are there restrictions to that CRA dollar? Or so what clears up, and, and the only reason I ask this is because Mike, Mike has a great point. So, I mean, so I take those dollars in as a, as a CRA, I, I accept them. And I said, well, wait a minute, you know, by statute, those are CRA dollars. I'm going to give those back to a trust. So do those restrictions fall off because we gave it back? Or are the same restrictions, uh, attached to those dollars that would be attached if we just took them in as CRA dollars?
Their ask is not, their ask is that they don't ever pass it to you in the first place. They're asking to keep it within their own control instead of paying the TIF to you all. They don't have the same geographic boundaries unless the board enters into an interlocal with them that tells them it's restricted.
But see, I don't understand that. I mean, and so, they came in for, a CRA is designated by a plan, and it's put into a TIF. And so those dollars that were collected were collected through that CRA, correct? I mean, they wouldn't collect it. I mean, I didn't collect those dollars in Centecite in North Hill. I collected those dollars in Brownsville and Montclair or whatever, Oakfield or whatever TIF I got. I, I don't know. I mean, honestly, I'm, this, I'm, I really don't understand. To me, those dollars had to be identified as a CRA dollar. They were not general fund dollars, right?
Right, but they're a tax collector. And so the point here is whether or not they are being obligated to remit their TIF to those CRAs or not. They haven't, except for one year, they haven't remitted that to the county yet.
So their position, Will's position would be those, those are not necessarily CRA dollars?
Correct.
Well, then there's no argument, then. He just keeps them.
Well, what.
We don't give them. Yeah, you don't give them. I mean, if they're not CRA dollars.
But they.
The statute allows for it.
The, yes, they're, they are, in my opinion, they are legally obligated to pay those unless the board enters into an interlocal with them as the trust that says, we know you owe us this, but we think you have a better way of spending it than we would have, so we're going to let you keep them if you spend them in this manner.
Here's, I'm gonna make it simple for me. Another layer of government not going directly through our neighborhood services, or I can go talk to them, I'm not interested in it. It's 5%. And, and I've committed to the sheriff, he wants them. You still got a lot of money to help all the kids that I can't, I have very little control over. All we get by statute legally is that we can put a very little bit of that money into the poorest areas of our, our county. I, I'm actually not surprised you're not asking us to take it. I'll be honest, man. Instead of fighting us, because we were talking about the poorest areas of Escambia County. I just can't believe I'm having to defend this this hard. But anyways, I, I'm for moving forward.
No, Mike, I see where you're going with that.
I'm out, man, but.
Don't think that I'm opposed to you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Collier, what if, what if, uh, what if the board amended the previous action and put another 90 days on there to allow some more discussions in light of some of the comments and, and the requests from Commissioner May? What if, what if we did that? It's not, that's not a changing of the action, it's an extending of the, of the deadline. And, you know, I, I don't know what enforcement we would have in the deadline anyway. I would hate to, I would hate to have, you know, anything move forward in a, in a, in a litigation manner. I mean, although it would give my dear friend an opportunity to win a litigation. If you're on both boards, you'd win one of them, Lumen.
Well, sometimes you, sometimes you try to get a win. And this is what I'm trying to avoid, Mike. And, and Will correct me, is what the challenge, what I heard in the trust is, we're going to engage in litigation now, you know, and, you know, that's.
For 5% going to the.
I, I don't, we've already, hey, listen, we've already hired him as a lawyer to negotiate this.
In fairness, I've spoken with Mr. Dunaway, and that is not the type of threat that he's making.
I didn't say it made a threat. I mean, don't, don't insinuate that now. I, I said, I'm trying to avoid litigation in a, in a, he is negotiating, and the trust did hire him to negotiate a position that they're paying for. That's a fact.
Allison, I need one answer. Do we have the authority to give this money to the CRAs? And if you say yes, I'm trusting your legal opinion, and I'm not, and I'm not worried about the legal suit. That's all I'm asking. If you say no, there's wiggle room. I need to know that.
The tax collector, the trust, is obligated to pay the percentage to the CRA TIFs. They have already paid one of those years. They were obligated to pay it when they started collecting taxes in 2021. They remain obligated to pay it each tax year going forward. They already paid.
Well, what if they didn't pay it? What if they just said they're not going to pay it?
We could find them, I think.
There are penalties and interest. Now, you guys waived their penalties and interest for the three years that they haven't paid. There's a statutory, after January 1, there's a statutory penalty and interest that would kick in. You all have waived it for the three years that are retro.
Will, and Will, in no way, I'm going to put any words in your mouth. If you need the microphone, Will, I would ask the sheriff to give it to you.
Yeah, please, if, if, yeah, and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, with, with all respect to, to Will and to Lindsay, I, I, you know, I understand you certainly have information. We just, you know, we don't, we don't have an opportunity to discuss things except in this, except in this fashion. And as long as there is a healthy discussion among, among the board and the attorney or the administrator, I'd like to try to allow that to continue as long as that's possible. But please, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I appreciate that. Um, the, the Escambia County, uh, the Escambia Children's, uh, Trust Board does not want to be an adversary. That, that was very clear. The idea and the reason that the statute, we believe, is set up, and we have other trusts in the, in the state that work in this way, is that the taxpayers in the county have elected to have a trust to man, manage, uh, funds that we collect those taxes, it's a special entity, and to use those for children's services. And that's why the statute has in place the interlocal agreement. You have the authority to exempt the tax collection for the CRAs, and the statute requires, if you do that exemption, that we enter into an interlocal agreement. We simply have not had the opportunity to come before you, to your staff, and talk to you about what that interlocal agreement can say. The interlocal agreement is a contract. We can negotiate the terms, and you can be as granular as you want, and that's how it'll be managed. The concern of the board was that its obligation was, it's collecting these taxes from taxpayers who said, serve the children. And that's what it's trying to do. The discussion item, and thank you, Commissioner May, um, both on your services, the board, on the trust, and also here, to bring it forward so that we could make a pitch. It's very clear that we have failed you. We, as a board, have failed you, the commissioners, in not explaining this process in, in the first two years. That was our fault. We should have been doing what, uh, we're doing with our partners at the city and having more robust discussion. We're asking for that time now to sit down and get with you and say, where are these programs and where can they be funded? And where are we not meeting your needs so that we can get there? So that we can be your children's service provider in the poorest areas of your CRAs, Commissioner, and in Commissioner May.
All right, Will. Mike, what, what about this?
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah, and just, just one second. What, what about this, Mike? You're very passionate about the issue, and I, and I understand that. And, you know, none of our districts are the same, and, you know, we each have our challenges. And you've, you've articulated, uh, some of the challenges in District 2 very well. And, uh, and with this issue, you've also, you know, you've made a very, uh, you know, a very passionate plea for the action that the board took previously. So without, without, you know, without undoing that, that action, and, you know, we are, you know, one of the things that we're, that we're going to try to do is, is, you know, move forward in a way that, that is progressive, but it's also, you know, as, as collegial as possible. What if, in light of that, uh, in light of that attempt that we, you know, without undoing anything that the board did, but, you know, give, give 90 days or 120 days to try to, uh, you know, to try to work out an interlocal agreement, try to have more communications. Um, you know, Commissioner May is, is our, you know, is, is our representative on the Children's Trust. And, um, I think the, you know, regardless of the outcome of the discussion, I think the discussion that, that you and he have had tonight is, is very healthy. And, um, you know, it's, uh, probably informative, maybe, you know, maybe informative somewhat both ways, because it informs each of you about, you know, your positions that you may not have known, you know, previously. Um, uh, you know, Commissioner May is very public on the trust. He has to take part in meetings, but, you know, you and I don't get to sit at that table. So it's, it's different. Um, and what if, without, without coming off of your position any, but just allowing a bit more time, that we take that action? And, and that seems like a, a reasonable outcome for a discussion tonight, if you can live with that.
Well, can I ask you a couple of questions? So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I get what you're saying, and I'm, I'm, I'm walking on hot coals here. But, but only because I am a little upset, because I honestly, I, I'll be honest, I'm surprised the statute allows for, why the board didn't just automatically say, set that money aside for the CRAs. I'm, I, I find it exhausting that I have to plead for money for poor kids. Over 5%, I just, so I have to come back for an interlocal agreement when I have a neighborhood services department that the statute allows? Has the board ever said, why don't we just set that amount aside that the statute allows for the CRAs? Has that discussion ever happened?
Part of the, um, the issue, Commissioner, is we were looking at precedents in other areas of the state. And in other areas of the state, the commissioners are the, the governing body, once the citizens elected a children's council and funded it, then they allowed for those services to go forward. So those funds were never asked for. So, or they went into an agreement immediately. So we've never had a situation that I am aware of, or that our state association is aware of, in which a county asks for back taxes, which is what happened here in, in this instance. Now, again, I think that we both have a learning experience through the establishment of the Children's Trust, and then coming on board and, and learning and creating a new tax authority and starting it up. But that's what happened in this, in this way. Should we have gotten together with staff earlier, three years ago, and, and talked about it? Absolutely. Uh, should we now? I mean, that's what we're asking for.
Can you ask me a straight question as a lawyer? Because I know sometimes it's hard for lawyers to just do a straight question. Do you believe this board by statute has the right to collect that money? It's a yes or no question?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we paid the year that you asked for it, for this year.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and Mike, I, I think you're absolutely right in that our neighborhood and human services, I mean, that's what the department is to work. It's what our CRA should be doing. Should be eliminating blight, building lives, building people up. That's what, that's what it's intended to be. Uh, the children's trust, in, in my opinion, is what they should be doing, is helping the least of them, uh, helping, uh, the kids who are high in poverty and low in educational attainment. The kids who are being placed at Warrington Middle School, and the kids that are being bused, as you said, you know, from Forest Creek, you know, and, and how do we find that happy medium, uh, to work together? I, I think that it's important for all of it. I think, you know, whether it's the Sheriff's Blazers program or, you know, quite frankly, I mean, if you go to Montclair, where I'm from, we got 100, not 100, but we got many unsolved murders because we didn't have cameras. You know, I mean, uh, uh, people need those. I mean, you know, kids need to be able to walk, you know, uh, down P Street at CA wise, you know, on a sidewalk and be able to ride their bike. I mean, all those things are important to me. I mean, it may not be important to some people to buy a ball and a bat, but I say that a ball and a bat keeps a gun, a kid from having a gun. I mean, for me, a kid having a light in a park keeps this kid from getting in mischief. So, I mean, even if I'm programming that park, I need to have lights in that park. So, Mike, you and I are at the same place. Uh, we, we should be, I mean, it, it should be working. You know, our neighborhood services should be a part, in my opinion, a subcommittee, or working directly with Lindsay. I mean, because how can a children's trust, uh, simply, uh, address a deliverable, uh, within our neighborhoods without looking at the infrastructure, the superstructure, as well as the programmatic part of it? I mean, it's, it's all one. I mean, you know, you, you can give the kid all the mentorship you want, but if he goes home without water, if he goes home without food, I mean, what good is the mentorship? You know, what, what good is a child if they don't have a house to live in? I mean, what good is a kid when they're living in a house with nine children with rats? You know, I mean, all those things are important. I mean, it's just not, to me, it's not one solution that we're walking down the road. I mean, it's a collaborative effort, and if we're going to save children, we have to save children collectively. We can't save them individually. Uh, and, and it's great. And I hear this on our trust board, Mike, all the time. It's the children's trust. It's for all the children of Escambia County. Well, quite frankly, y'all didn't market all the children of Escambia County. Y'all market the poor children. And so you know what? U- u- until we get to the bottom and build a foundation solid, I mean, we can't worry about, you know, putting a roof on when we don't have a foundation. And so we should really, as, as, Mike, going to where you are, really, the children's trust and all our programs should be targeted to the poor children. Quite frankly, I mean, that's really where it should be, because, you know, we can fund all these other kids and all these other after-school programs, who parents can afford it, but we're forgetting the very kids that can't. So, Mike, I just want to tell you, I'm not opposed. Uh, it's one thing I've always said, if I give somebody my word to advocate, and I said this to the board, and I said to Will, I was going to come advocate, but I'm certainly going to be a consensus builder, you know? And at the end of the day, you know, if we had to go figure out some money to help, I mean, we could, uh, like you said, it's $400,000. Your district is hurting. My district is hurting. Uh, the sheriff is calling on us to get lights and to get cameras, and, you know, to protect my neighborhoods where people that work for me got to drive home tonight to Montclair, and they need to be safe. So I understand on both sides of it, uh, Mike. So, you know, I'm not going to, um, certainly, um, I'm not going to contradict your position, because you and I share the boundaries. You know what I mean? Our districts are almost the same. I mean, you know, a porch island, Addis Court is a porch island, Marina Court. I mean, they're cousins. Oftentimes, they're brothers and sisters because they all live together anyway. You know what I mean? So, I mean, it, it doesn't matter. I mean, we share Brownsville, we, we share Gulf Beach Highway, we, we share, um, Lexington Terrace. I mean, you and I share all, we share the pines. I mean, I got more people in the pines in my district probably than you, because, I mean, the lease says the pines, but the actuality says that, you know, they.
Yeah, they're playing football.
Yeah, they're playing football with me. Yeah, they're couch surfing, but their dad and mom couch, couch surfing. So it's good. So, so I respect, I, I respect where you are, Mike. And, you know, it is what it is. And, you know, I'm not gonna.
I want to make one comment, and then we'll come to some sort of agreement, Mr. Chairman.
We're fine.
So 95% is programs. I don't have a problem with 5% infrastructure going to CRAs. I don't have a problem with 5% infrastructure going to CRAs. Kids need to see and believe that their environment is, is better than just living in Gulf Breeze. And so, I guess that's where we differ a little bit, or maybe, I don't know, I think Lumen's on board, but where the, I'm challenging the Children's Trust. We're only asking for a small amount that can go to Neighborhood Services for infrastructure. You still have 95% of your money to go for programs. I, that's never, ever come up as like, "Maybe we should do infrastructure through the CRAs." Then why, why don't your board, okay, I'll be willing to have you go back and just make this, make you guys look good, and Lumen and I will look bad, you know?
I promise you, I won't win. Hey, I'm trying hard, but I promise you, I promise you I won't win either way. It doesn't matter what I say, I won't win.
I don't want to charge them any fines. I don't want to do anything like that. I don't think that's beneficial to anybody. But I do think that we should allow a small amount, since it's allowed by the legislature, to go for infrastructure for poor areas.
But, and Mike, and Mike, listen, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support you and agree.
Can we do that with the interlocal agreement, though? Can we, we can dictate that that goes to infrastructure, correct?
Why do we need another layer of government to do what the state legislature's already said we could do?
But couldn't we at least direct, Mike, I mean, would you feel comfortable if you and Commissioner Berry and Commissioner Holber, at least have our human services to begin to work with the trust?
I'm fine with Neighborhood Services, absolutely. What I would do is go back into the trust and say, "Hey, we got a wonderful opportunity to help poor kids. We can give them 5% to the CRAs." That's what I'd do.
All right, dude, I'm all right.
I mean, that's why I'm mad.
I, I mean, listen, I was not asking for anything tonight other than to open up the doors of communication, Mike. And I certainly, I think you've, you've made your position pretty clear, Mike, and I respect it.
Some of the feedback from the, from the, some of the feedback from the county attorneys that she doesn't feel like she can, that she can negotiate in good faith with the, with the previous formal board action of, of what we did with the timeframe on there. So, while leaving the action the same, can we, can we act to put some more timeframe on there so that she can be allowed to, in good faith, negotiate with, with Will? And that would also give us, you know, through whatever timeframe you want to put on there, but give us some time to work with the staff, and, you know, Allison can negotiate with Will, and then hopefully Lindsay can work with, with Clara and our, you know, and our Neighborhood and Human Services to try to negotiate on the staff side some as well. Can we do that? If, if we don't take, if we don't take any action, then my conversation with the county attorney this afternoon was she wasn't comfortable moving forward because we've got a deadline that has passed. And while this has been a, you know, I think a very valuable discussion, if, I think we're missing, I think we're missing an opportunity and won't, you know, be together for action like this for a little while if we don't allow them an opportunity to, to talk.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Lindsay, can you kind of discuss what the interlocal looks like at the city? I was going to ask Alex, but he's walked out.
Oh, it already is on. We don't, we don't currently have one. What I will tell you is that's the conversation that we are having, is the mayor is very interested in his schools performing within his particular city limits. Now, some of those schools that have needs do not fall in a CRA. And so, he recognizes that if we move the dollars from the trust into that, he's going to need to break those up over the CRAs that wouldn't necessarily affect the children that are at those particular schools. So what he wants to work with us on, and he's doing his research, he's gone to all the schools, he's reached out to our state organization, he's reached out to Miami, which is, I think, our longest-standing CSC in the state, to ask how they've negotiated those and how they've worked on those collectively. So, you know, the ones that I have seen and read, and I've gotten, I think, a copy of almost all of them, the one that kind of stood out to me that, because I lived there at one point, was Coconut Creek, which is down in the Broward County area. They get like $30,000 per year. And the interlocal agreement basically said, "Children's Trust will spend $30,000 on children's programming in Coconut Creek." They didn't dictate it. Now, I have seen some, and have been advised by my counterparts, that they do have more granular programming, like, like Commissioner May and I were talking about, like your youth employment program. They would say, "That's what we want you to fund." And if it's within one CRA, it would be whatever that amount is. Or you could, what I call like crowdfunding it and say, "We'd like you to take care of this at this amount." It can be done a variety of different ways, and each of your districts have a variety of different, you know, issues. You know, but I do want to just clarify, like District 2 has 739 children that have been served since the trust started. District 3, 2081, those are fresh numbers for you guys. So, we're, we're covering a lot of it, but we're at the beginning, too.
Served in what capacity? What do you mean by that?
Those are with programs and services that we pay for at the trust through contracts with local nonprofits.
Can you email me tomorrow where they're at?
I can send you all of it. We've got a whole power, I can send it to all of you. I had, I had my dad a guy break it down for me, because I wanted to see what does it look like.
Lindsay, how much money goes to direct services? Not admin costs, not, just directly to those children?
For, in these CRAs?
Yeah, or overall, yeah, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot like that, but overall, I mean, what percentage of the dollars go directly to? Because I see where Commissioner Collier, where he's sitting. I mean, how much money gets caught up into salary, staff, and indirect costs?
At the trust, we're at about a 9% to 10% administrative rate. And I've cut a lot to do that, because that's, that's about the rate you should be as a nonprofit, even though we're.
And in an organization that you fund would still be at about 9% to 10%, or would they cost be a little higher, their indirect costs and admin costs?
For some of the other organizations, they can go up to 15% is what we have in policy. But they do have to justify it, and not everyone takes indirect. Which is that, sorry, that we call it indirect, it's that indirect cost there. All things we're looking at, Commissioner May, you know, those are things, well, you know, I'm like on, what, seven months here? But I'm bringing my experience to the table on what that should look like. And we've had to correct some things, we've had to cut some contracts, we've had to have some tough conversations, and I'm okay with that.
And Lindsay, you're not asking for an exemption. You're simply asking for an interlocal agreement with restricting those funds to a CRA to have you engaged in the monitoring and the measurement of those funds.
It's not only that, to make sure that it's spent on children's services. And that's where our board gets hung up on that, is the, the difference, I think, between what we identify as a children's service and what would be infrastructure and what we promised through the vote it was going to be.
An interlocal agreement will not earmark those small amount of dollars to CRAs. They can, that interlocal agreement could go for a lot of different things. Is that, that's correct, right?
If you want it to.
Right. That's why I, I like what the legislature did and gave us a little bit of teeth. I like what we voted on before. I've supported the sheriff. I don't think it's going to hurt the trust. I think it's actually going to make your life a little bit easier, because you'll be able to say some projects that Neighborhood Services are doing. But we got in this eventually.
And that's fine. You know, we beat a dead horse, oh, oh, I mean, we, we've killed it. I mean, you know, honestly, just wanted to have this about the interlocal and the TIF and to kind of model what the city is doing, and obviously, they've not implemented where they wanted to implement. You know, at the end of the day, Mike, I think we all want to do the same thing. What's, what's, what's good for the community, what's good for the children? You know, and, and I get it, this, and, you know, although, you know, funds are restricted for a Children's Trust for children, but if I don't do something to make the family safe, I mean, I can't save the children. You know, it's often when we do feedings and giveaways, people say, "We're just giving it to the children." And I'm one of those that I give it to the children and the parents, because I said, "I just can't feed the children, and the parents go home hungry." So, I, I mean, I get that we got to have safe neighborhoods, Mike. So, in no way am I being contradictory to what you're saying. And I certainly was advocating just for a more conversation with, you know, our staff. But, you know, at the end of the day, Mike, if we're going to send Allison and Weston to negotiate and come up with something, and then it's going to be a big debate on the dice, I'd rather, you know, have, find the consensus tonight, rather than send staff to come back to where we don't have a consensus in 120 days, we're still, you know, beating this horse, so.
Well, I'll be more than happy to make a motion to give them 60 days to pay the remaining money and move forward, and then I'll be more than happy, I don't know if I have a second, but I'd be more than happy.
I mean, you can leave things where they are, you know, I mean.
Yeah, but I don't want to find the trust fund, I don't think, you know.
No, I mean, I hope. I was just asking for a conversation, you know, and so that's, I mean, I, there could be no action. You know, I've done what I told Lindsay and the staff I was going to do, I brought it forward, you know what, I mean.
Well, I'd rather just leave it the way we voted before, honestly.
So, we don't have to have a vote? I mean, honestly, I mean.
Is that correct, Allison?
I mean, there's, I mean, there's no vote.
It is correct. You don't, you don't have to vote on anything. You already voted in September there, at that, if that's true, then they're delinquent for the two years that they haven't paid.
All right, well, I'm fine with that, if the rest of the board is.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, you know, that may not, you know, that may not allow, you know, based on the conversation with Allison this afternoon, they may not allow her to feel like she's negotiating in good faith when that's the standing board action. But it doesn't preclude any of us from having those conversations with, with their board members and their staff and with Lindsay, and it doesn't, you know, that, the board action standing, it's not like we're taking action to do anything different. We're just leaving the action from September on the table, and, or August on the table, and.
Do we need to extend that, though? We do need to extend that, we don't.
That is, if the board wishes to extend it, this would be the opportunity to do that. Otherwise, they're about two weeks overdue on the two years that they haven't paid. You did also waive their.
They're not going anywhere, it's the taxpayers, they can't run and not pay.
I guess my question to the board is, do we want to know what an interlocal would look like so we can vote yes or no? Or do we not have any interest in knowing what one would look like?
I have no interest. The city doesn't have one yet, and we're talking 5%. So, to me, Commissioner.
Do we want to extend this until the city has their interlocal?
No, I want to lead, I don't want to follow the city.
It doesn't seem like we're really going to come to a consensus, and, and, you know, I don't know, this is not.
I would, I mean, you know, Mike, I don't, yeah, I'm done, but I don't know, you know, for me, like you and I have geographical lines, have no boundaries of poverty, crime, or whatever. So, for like me, I serve with the city, but directly affects the city, directly affects me, you know? I mean, to me, it would be, you know, great if, but if the city and I were doing the same thing. But I, I get what you're saying, we don't necessarily have to do what the city is, what the city is doing. And so, with that, I'm waving the white towel.
All right, and I'm good with that, too. I mean, you know, I thought we may have been able to get there, but it's, it's, this is not, it's not my issue, and I'm not going to, you know, not going to weigh in with a, with a, with a heavy, heavy comment.
Well, my commitment is I would like to see consensus on the board. I don't want to, you know, I'm, I'm not going to try to force a vote against my colleague.
That's right.
You know, on something, I mean, that's going to be, you know, that I, that I gotta.
So, we had a lot of good discussion, especially you and Commissioner Collier. So, there, you know, that's a lot of good discussion.
We're still cool, Mike, you know, I mean, it's fine. Yeah, it's all right, I mean, it's.
Thank you, Will, Lindsay, thank you all for being here and engaging with the board. Board, that's, that's all the agenda. Madam Counsel, you have nothing further, I presume? And we will reconvene on the 19th for a, for a festive, festive day.